Good evening. I'd like to call the January 14th meeting of the Cheshire Town Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Peter Talbot.
Here.
John Walsh.
Here.
David Veliver.
Here.
John Milo.
Here.
Fiona Pearson.
Here.
Tricia Kramer.
Here.
Greg Wolf.
Here.
Nina Allard. And Jim James. For Miss President.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Brings us to item three, public communications. Our first, item A, is the recognition of the Cheshire Junior Cheer Group. And I have a proclamation to read, and then we'd love to have the young people come up and be recognized by the council and maybe take a group photo and have, give the parents an opportunity to get some shots as well. This is a certificate of recognition for Cheshire Junior Cheer Competition Team, whereas the Cheshire Junior Cheer Competition D-12 Team earned second place at Nationals, and the D-14 Team earned fifth place at Nationals. And whereas the team's cheer for the Cheshire Rams Junior Football, and whereas the team is comprised of 14 cheerleaders led by five volunteer coaches, and whereas the team worked incredibly hard and put in a lot of time practicing and performing. Now therefore, I, Peter J. Talbot, Mayor and Chairman of the Town Council, on behalf of the Cheshire Town Council and all the citizens of Cheshire, express our pride in our Junior Cheer Team, and by this certificate do hereby recognize the Cheshire Junior Competition Team and coaches for their dedication and outstanding teamwork. We congratulate them on this significant accomplishment and wish these young athletes much continued success, dated at Cheshire, Connecticut, this 14th day of January 2025.
While everyone's getting set up for a photo, I just wanted to say congratulations to the team as well. You know, I had the joy to be in the parents' position back in 2019 where my daughter went to the Nationals for Cheshire Junior Cheer. I brought the photo from that year. It even included the older sister of one of the members of the current team, and it was an experience that she still remembers and treasures, and I hope that all of you
Good job, girls.
Next up on the agenda is our recognition of the 2024 Connecticut Fire Prevention Poster Contest winners. As Mr. Youngquist and the two individuals make their way up, I will read the proclamation. The proclamations go to Melena Doral and Yana Bercenova. Whereas the 2024 Connecticut Fire Prevention Poster Contest was recently conducted to promote fire prevention awareness among children and families, and whereas the 2024 Connecticut Fire Prevention Contest was recently conducted, my apologies, whereas Melena Doral, a fourth grade student at Norton Elementary School, was one of two local winners in this contest. Now therefore, I, Peter Talbot, Mayor and Chairman of the Town Council, on behalf of the council and all the citizens of Cheshire, do hereby offer our congratulations to Melena. We also offer our appreciation for her participation in this contest and helping to spread this important message dated at Cheshire, Connecticut, this 14th day of January 2024. And likewise is the one for Yana, a fifth grade student at Chapman School, who was selected as one of our two local winners. And with that, I will turn the microphone over to Don Youngquist.
Thank you. Hello, everybody, and thank you, Town Council, for continuing to support our program. Just a little bit about it, the program was initiated to provide teachers with materials and resources to develop fire safety awareness in children so they can in turn promote fire prevention for everyone in their family every day. This is a cooperative effort by six organizations, the Office of the State Fire Marshal, the Connecticut Fire Marshals Association, Connecticut DEP, Connecticut Fire Chiefs Association, Connecticut State Board of Education, and the Connecticut Fear Plan. The theme is fire prevention, everyone, every day. So pretty much our fourth and fifth graders in Cheshire compete against the rest of the state, and so from here, Yana and Melena will move on to the New Haven County judging, and if they do well, they'll move on to the states. So the county winners will receive $150. The winning counter posters, as I said, will move on to the state, and then the statewide winner will receive $750, and the school will receive $500. And locally, we provide them with a $200 gift card and a cool ride to the school and a fire truck.[618.66][618.66](laughter) So, thank you for having us. Thank you for joining us. Nice job. And I have... You want the money, I am sure.[632.66][632.66](laughter) Yeah, I don't know if he could hold all that.[641.41][641.41](laughter) Yeah, I'll take them both, I guess.
Yep.
While she could have hers.
If you have another.[651.16][651.16](laughter)
I'll carry this over for you. Did you want her to come up and show the picture to everybody?
Don, thank you for continuing this program. It is, it is one of the things we look forward to on an annual basis in January, to see the, to see the contest winners and to see their art. So, thank you for your continued efforts in, in providing this for the community.
Thank you very much.
Brings us to item C, the summary of fiscal year 2425, second quarter consent calendar donations. Actually, it's probably fourth quarter, correct?
Fiscal.
Oh, fiscal, yeah, that's right. Yeah. You have to rely on the budget share for those things. So those, those are in your packets for your perusal. Which brings us to item D, public comment. Before we begin public comment, I'll turn the microphone over to Town Attorney Jeff Denofrio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just an update on where we're at with respect to the litigation with the former owner of the dogs and the regulatory status with respect to the town's interactions with the Department of Agriculture concerning the town's animal control facility. With respect to the litigation, as you know, there's two separate proceedings that the town is involved in. The town is a plaintiff in a Connecticut Superior Court action against the former dog owner in which she has asserted certain counterclaims against the town, and we were scheduled to have a status conference with the court on January 9th. On January 8th, we received an email from the case flow coordinator in Superior Court telling us the judge wasn't going to be in on the 9th, so the court rescheduled that to January 28th. So we're looking to wrap up the litigation at that status conference on the 28th. As you know, there's also a Chapter 13 bankruptcy proceeding that was commenced by a petition filed by the former owner of the dogs in United States Bankruptcy Court in Connecticut. That Chapter 13 case is pending dismissal, and the town has requested that the bankruptcy court retain concurrent jurisdiction with the Connecticut Superior Court over the matter that is of interest to the town. On December 16th, I was contacted by the Connecticut Department of Agriculture. They requested that we have a meeting on December 19th with representatives of the department and the town to talk about concerns that the department had with the animal control facility. We had the meeting on the 19th. The town manager, the police chief, Lieutenant Miller, Lou Daggustin, and I met with three representatives of the department, and they talked to us about their findings from an onsite inspection that occurred back in August, and some concerns that they had, and we spoke with them about how to address those concerns, memorialized the agreement in a consent order, had, as you all know, a special Town Council meeting on December 23rd. The council unanimously approved entering into that consent order. The commissioner signed it on the 24th. One of the things that's required under the consent order is for the town to submit monthly status reports with regard to the items that the town is required to perform with respect to the animal control facility. That first report, even though the order wasn't signed until the 24th, the first report was filed by the town on December 30th. The town has been in contact with the state animal control officer concerning multiple items in the consent order that have been performed, multiple items that are in progress to get approval for things like the training class that folks working at the animal control facility are required to take, and, you know, that's, the town is working cooperatively with the department and vice versa to address the issues. Like I said, multiple items in that consent order have already been dealt with, others are in the process of being dealt with. We can give you more specifics if you want in terms of those items, but that's essentially the update from a macro level.
Thank you, Attorney Denofrio. With that, anyone who is interested in addressing the council may approach the podium. Please state your name, your full address, and keep your comments limited to three minutes.
Oh, sure. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Ray Bennett, 840 North Brooksville. And the reason I'm here tonight is just two light items. One is many know John White, been involved with the Veterans for many years, is less involved now, but he's recently been nominated by the, Jeff Flock and his dad drew the veterans to the Connecticut Veterans Hall of Fame, and he was selected and will be inducted next week, and so just bringing that to your attention. I understand you may be doing something as well. I didn't know they were going to be here too, but anyhow, so that is just one thing I wanted to bring to your attention. The other thing is downstairs, Diane Calibro's been advertising that in 2026 can be 250 years of the Declaration of Independence, and some of you know that we've been doing a reading of that Declaration of Independence on the green for the last 15 years, it'll be this year, and so my understanding is you're trying to put together a committee or some ideas for that 250-year celebration. So she wanted, I just mentioned that we've been doing it for years, and so whatever the plans are, we can kind of be in contact. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Fock.
Jeff Flock, 560 Mixville Road. I'm here tonight because I won't be here Thursday, I'll be out of state for the public hearing, so I wanted to have a chance to just add a little more input. I'm also the VFW commander here in town. And Thursday night, you have the public hearing on the naming of the new North End School. So obviously, I don't know if there's anybody here that doesn't know my opinion or my recommendation, but bottom line, the new North End School should be named the Barnum Elementary School in honor of Harvey C. Barnum Jr., a distinguished Cheshire native and one of the few living recipients of the Medal of Honor. 61 living recipients currently. Why this matters? Well, the chances of meeting one of the 61 living recipients is approximately 1 in 5.5 million. So if you met 5.5 million people, one of them has a chance of being a Medal of Honor recipient. So statistically, it's nearly impossible, but Cheshire's unique. We are home to a living Medal of Honor recipient. Barney Barnum was born and raised in Cheshire, graduated Cheshire High School in 1958. His life and achievements are a testament to the core values that should guide our children as they grow. Courage, the bravery to act in face of danger. Sacrifice, the willingness to give up something for the greater good. Integrity, honest and strong moral principles. Patriotism, love for one's country and a desire to serve it. You don't always have to don a uniform for service, many other ways to do it. Citizenship, being a good and responsible member of society. These are not just abstract ideals, these are the principles Barney Barnum has lived by, inspiring those around him locally, nationally, and internationally. Naming the school after Barney Barnum will do more than honor one individual. It will provide long-term recognition for Barney's extraordinary achievements and the values he represents. Our town, offer our town a name that resonates with pride, history, and a sense of belonging. Celebrate Cheshire's unique connection to a living hero, one who has been recognized with the highest honor in this great nation. Barnum Elementary School will stand as a lasting tribute to Barney's legacy and a reminder to future generations of what true service and sacrifice looks like. We're only one generation away from losing what we have fought so hard to preserve, our freedom. That is not something that can be bought, it is earned through service and sacrifice. Naming the school after Barney Barnum will help instill in our children a love for our country and an understanding that freedom is not free. Through this, through his story, we can teach our youth about real heroes. Naming the school is not just about honoring the past, it's about investing in the future by teaching the values that make our community and our nation strong. And I'll close with, two years ago, a little over two years ago, my daughter Haley stood up here and spoke, December 13th, 2022, when, I think it was when we approved the schools. And she said, "The Navy named an Arleigh Burke-class destroyer, the USS Harvey C. Barnum Jr., so I believe it is time for the town to do the same and honor what this Cheshire native has accomplished." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fock.[1307.83][1307.83](applause)
Hello, I'm Jean Melendez, 1425 Waterbury Road, Cheshire, Connecticut. We're back again. Some things have changed, but sadly, so much has remained the same. The Department of Agriculture came out with a report that clearly articulated what all of you knew anyway since April. Neglect and abuse happened to those animals while they were at the pound. The conditions were abhorrent. They suffered without veterinary care, without being groomed, sitting in their feces and urine. The kennels were hosed with chemicals while those animals were in them. It doesn't get more horrific than this. And because our words seem to lack impact, it's important again for the Town Council, the public, and the news to see the physical manifestation of what happened. I promise that we will send every photo we have to the Town Council. This is a picture of Lily. This is Lily when she arrived at the pound. This is Lily, covered in feces and urine. This is a text from the ACO, and I want to read it perfectly. "I might need a lawyer when the owner finds out one of her dogs lost the back use, lost the use of her back legs in my care, lol," laughing out loud. The ACO described in veterinary records that Lily had paralysis in the back of her legs, but that's not what she said in other places. She was very clear in her text, this happened in her care. She was also clear when she reported to the, I think it was Kelly Baker, the ACO, that there was another dog standing over Lily. There were multiple reports from people that had firsthand knowledge in the pound that Lily had been in fights with other dogs. She had knowledge of it, and the other people that were at the pound physically had knowledge of it. Instead of doing what should be done, taking her to the vet as a result of negligence before, not when she got euthanized, before, she did nothing. Here's pictures of the pound while the dogs were seized there. There's, again, I'll send you these pictures. That's moldy food that was at the pound. Those pictures are taken at the pound. There is brown water at the pound. This is what occurred. That went on for two and a half years with 28-plus or minus dogs, depending on the puppies that were born that were not. You do have a report from the Department of Agriculture, but what you don't have in that report is a demand for accountability and justice. That's left up to you. Let's talk about that. Let's talk about the ACO who was with these animals for two years, who lived with these animals, looking like, and you'll see pictures of new animals that were dropped off in my mailbox that look like they look. She lived with that, yet she refused help from the Department of Agriculture, she refused help from Desmond's Army, she refused volunteer help from so many of us in this crowd that called. She needs to be held accountable. She did nothing except actively prevented anyone who could have helped from doing so. Yet to this day, that ACO is still working and has the duty and responsibility of giving summons to people that neglect and abuse dogs. She could, she could have someone who lives in this town arrested for neglecting and abusing dogs, but she is above the law, scot-free, no issue. In the current settlement agreement between the town and the original owner of the dog, there's a clause that the ACO should go and monitor whether there's neglect, and she should teach the owner on the welfare and management of dogs. That's insanity. When you see these pictures that everyone holds up, that's insanity. How can anyone co-sign that with a straight face? Does the oath to put the town first include no accountability for employees that break the law? They break the same law they're enforcing. How does anyone in this town live with that double standard? And don't get me wrong, there's plenty of accountability to go around. We understand Lieutenant Miller was supposed to supervise that pound. We understand the Chief of Police supervises that pound. I assume the town manager also has jurisdiction over that pound, and then the Town Council has jurisdiction over everyone. If one of those steps, if one of those parties intervened, we all wouldn't be here. We all wouldn't be here.
Ms. Melendez, I'd ask that you wrap it up, please.
Sure. Okay. So, I understand that the town is willing to do structural corrections to the town, but we say a structurally updated facility that is negligently supervised by invisible supervisors that didn't act immediately when wrongdoing was discovered is not going to heal this town. And I promise you this, we will not allow this debacle to go forward. We are not going away. We will not be ignored like those dogs that were in the pound for two years. Thank you.[1672.32][1672.32](applause)
Thank you, Ms. Melendez. And just before the next speaker, we did get copies that I will share with the council.
Yes, we have actual, I'm going to send you guys the original photos of all of those.
Patricia Venice, 35 Cambridge Drive, Cheshire. I addressed you last month, and I returned tonight still deeply upset by the lack of accountability regarding the 28 dogs seized and held at the Cheshire Pound for over two years. As you know, the Connecticut Department of Agriculture cited the Cheshire Pound for multiple violations, including poor internal conditions and failure to provide the animals with welfare. In addition to the DOAG violations, photographs have surfaced many of you have seen or will see tonight. These images reveal the true tragedy behind these violations. Burnt skin, matted fur, where faces and bodies are unrecognizable, extreme loss of fur, and long curved toenails that I can just assume was painful. These images are more than just pictures, they serve as reminders of cruelty and abuse these animals endured in silence. The town's animal control officer, whose duty is to ensure the safety and welfare of animals, failed in every aspect of this responsibility. Yet she holds the power, duty, and responsibility to advocate for animal welfare. The Chief of Police has publicly supported her, but how can he stand behind someone who inflicted such cruelty and abuse? The town manager knew that 28 dogs were coming into this facility but could only accommodate 18. Did he make plans to properly house and care for the additional 10 dogs? Where were the added resources or budget to account for their care? Where were the added resources or budget to account for their care? Last month, Attorney Donofrio, you stated, "There's no question in my mind that the town most certainly did the right thing by acting." But I ask you, do these photos, do these photos look like we did the right thing? Did these animals' lives mean so little that they didn't even warrant fresh food? Daily food, fresh healthcare, and grooming? These defenseless victims were not disposable. They were living beings with hearts that beat, eyes that searched for kindness, and their bodies literally ached for care. If the town couldn't provide these basic needs, why did we accept them from an animal abuse case only to continue that same injustice? It's disgusting. These conditions didn't happen overnight. This was not an isolated failure. It is a systemic one. There must be accountability and appropriate consequences for the multitude of failures that occurred while these animals were under the town's care, starting with the ACO. She is the one that was to provide in their well-being. Nobody should be above the law. We owe it to them, and we owe it to the animals that will enter through the Cheshire Pound to ensure that this will never happen again. We will be their voice. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tony Bagliori, 1191 Merridon Avenue, Southington, Connecticut. For the last 20, oh, well, nearly 23 years, my wife and I have run best friends for life animal rescue. I said last time, we've seen a lot of things in this business and a lot of people working together. I don't know how Cheshire works. I mean, normally, animal control is under the Department of Police, which means your ACO was supervised by a sergeant, lieutenant, but it's under the Police Department, which brings about the question, is it the public's job to police the police? And it becomes, it becomes a very sensitive situation for the town, I would imagine, that you don't want to admit that the police made a mistake. And by no means am I down on the police. I say thank God for the police. But in this situation of animal control, if the Police Department is too overburdened or too lax, let's say, to know what's going on, maybe that department should be overseen by someone else, or there should be a private liaison. There's over 250 animal rescues in the state of Connecticut. I'm sure 50% of those would step up and at least take one animal, and your problem would be solved. It's just, it's very strange that this would go on, and like I said, maybe it's very loosely supervised by the Police Department. I don't know how your animal control works in this town. But Attorney Donofrio, you spoke about a consent order, which, after everyone else here speaks, I would hope you'd go into the details of that, please, as you said you might. To me, it sounds a little bit like a Band-Aid. If I look around this room full of angry people, and there's a lot of really angry animal advocates here, we want to know, like, why charges haven't been pressed? Clearly, a crime has been committed. There's probable cause, a crime has been committed by a certain person. I mean, beyond a reasonable doubt. It's very obvious just by looking around this room, and very disturbing. I mean, I see animal advocates, I see Desmond's Army, I see Bikers Against Animal Cruelty. I see some big voices here. I see these people that come out when a crime happens. So I believe a crime did happen here, and it should be treated that way. For the town to ignore it, it makes it worse. By ignoring the problem or looking the other way, going forward, that doesn't look very good. It doesn't put it in a very good light. A problem occurred, you deal with it and move on, I believe. I mean, in the private rescue world, if we had done this, we would immediately be shut down, and we'd be facing criminal charges. So why is the town any different? There's quite a few people here, more than last time, and I think the numbers are going to keep growing, and these people aren't going to go away. Like I said, you've got Desmond's Army here. They show up to criminal cases, you know, not to police the police. You know, I think something needs to be done with this. It's not going to go away. By addressing the problem and moving forward in a positive manner, instead of just giving people Band-Aid answers, I mean, that's my personal feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagliori.
Good evening. My name is Holly Fontaine from Vernon, Connecticut. Jean basically said really what I-
Could you state your full address, please?
Sorry, 35 Elizabeth Lane, Vernon. Jean said everything. I thought it was absolutely wonderful that the cheerleaders were here and you guys recognized them. That is so important. The little girl that was with the fire department, I left, I had to go to the bathroom, I came back, and as I was coming up, the cheerleaders were leaving, and they thought everybody was here for them. So they're watching what is going to happen. They were shocked that this was all about dog abuse, as one said. You're recognizing children, now they're aware of this too, and it's so important because they're the future. They're the next ones that are going to take our positions, take our jobs, advocate for animals, do great things for your town, and the ACO really needs to be held accountable. I don't understand how she could have done this for two and a half years, collected a paycheck, 30-year veteran of the animal control facility, and she didn't clean it, she didn't care for the dogs. So what did she get paid for? Really? It's just heartbreaking, and people knew about this. There's no way you could have not. It went on too long. Mold takes a while to grow on food. Water takes a while to turn colors. It's heartbreaking. I have an exact dog like this, and since this case, when I look at her, I can't even imagine having my dog endure something like that. It's heinous. It's neglect, it's cruel. They went from an abuse case, Cheshire stepped up, they took them, and then that was it. They lived two years of hell. They are nothing but loyal beings that love us unconditionally and teach us more than most humans do. People make mistakes, I understand that, but this was a big mistake, and she does need to be held accountable, many others probably too, but she was the initial caregiver. The problem is that it wasn't addressed. It went on, and until we had this group together, now people are reaching out. I'm getting private messages. I had a slew today. I didn't even get to them, but they said they were coming because they saw my post in the Cheshire groups on Facebook. They don't have a voice, but we do. Maybe nobody thought that we would find out, or anyone would find out, and their story couldn't be told, but that's what we're here to do. We can and we will continue to fight this until the very end. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fontaine.
Hello there, my name is Jim Block, back again. I live at 60 Contour Drive in Cheshire. I had initially written something up, and I found it too insulting to the council, which I know is composed of good people, but you screwed up big time. I was so angered when I got to spend so much time writing a letter to the mayor, didn't get a response, wrote to Ms. Lillard, and then I got, "Thank you for your email. Do not misinterpret this lack of response on this matter as a lack of caring." It was a boilerplate, seemed like it was written by the town attorney. I wouldn't do your job, Mr. Talbot, one-tenth of as well as you do at running the council, but I would not listen to the town attorney all the time, stand behind him. I would have said, "Give me a Plan B, because I owe the people some information." I know you can't disclose things, there are some reasons, personnel matters, but I would have said, "Give me a Plan B." I've seen the man be wrong before, I think he's wrong this time. There are things that could have been said. Having said that, I have a lot of respect for the police officers in this town. I've met a few of them, they were great. But how this could get, this is so bizarre, to be so screwed up by the ACO, so missed by the Police Department that's 200 feet away, that couldn't get, it was either too lazy, too incompetent, or too uncaring, the chief and this Lieutenant Miller, whoever he is, that couldn't come over there and see the disastrous conditions. This isn't one minor thing. Those pictures show mold, piled up dirty laundry, just a little bit from the consent order. On 8/6/24, myself and Special State Animal Control Officer Di Pietro responded to the Cheshire Animal Control Facility to conduct an investigation after a complaint pertaining to the health and well-being of the dogs was made by a veterinarian at Merridon Animal Hospital. A professional that they brought a dog to decided this was worth complaining to the state over. Inspection was consulted, multiple violations were found in the facility not being approved. Overall, the pound did not appear to be clean or sanitary. Upon entering the facility, the front door approximately 30 or so feet from the kennel, there was an odor of urine. The hallway leading down to the kennel area was lined with clutter that appeared to be a mix of bedding and food, both canned and bagged. Laundry was piled high with soiled bedding, kitchen area was also cluttered. At the time, all the runs in the kennel were full, multiple dogs in a run, all but one of the dogs are being held in a single case. At the time of this inspection, it was noted that the floors of the runs were soaking wet. I believe Mr. Walsh, when he inspected, said he smelled wet dog. The dogs appeared to be in need of grooming, with one of them having obvious hair loss and red skin, obvious signs of vermin in the storage room and the storage cabinet that is located in the kennel area. ACO Liler admitted that there was a mouse issue when she had been attempting to eradicate, almost done. The open, unopened bags of feed, as stated previously, were all over the facility with its large amount piled up in the hallway area, and they looked moldy. In the kennel area, I observed one open bag of prescription food that was sitting on the wet floor. None of both the opened food were in the required storage containers. The issues found during this inspection were discussed with ACO Liler. ACO Liler attempted to make a lot of excuses about the condition of the facility. I explained she would need to make arrangements for repairs to be done and cleanliness of the facility would need to be addressed immediately. I offered to return on a future date and assist with the cleanup. This is the state animal control officer wanting to assist, but ACO Liler refused my offer. We also discussed upgrades that are necessary. We'd met with, and then it goes on, they met with Lieutenant Miller and Chief Drive. This is horrible, absolutely horrible, and it's bizarre, and I hope that there'll be communication, some, you can't do this in private industry, people would lose their jobs left and right. I just would hope that you guys will take the right step and not make this the legacy of this council. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Block.
Hi, Miki Ulisio, 158 Bell Ridge Road, 52 years a Cheshire resident. I would choose to be any place other than here tonight, but I must speak as the only person that I know of who has direct contact with the kennel for the two years and one month that the dogs were there. I am also a member of Desmond's Army. I have adopted dogs from Greyhound, Merridon, two dogs from Cheshire, so I'm very into dog safety and relations. But I have been there for the time, more than anybody else in this room, I am sure. And I have to speak up with the vilification that they're doing for the ACO. One, no grooming, not true. That is not true. Excuse me, I respected your rights, please do the same for me.
Ladies and gentlemen, please afford Ms. Ulisio the same respect that you're allotted. Thank you.
Because I think we're really all here for the benefit of the dogs. This is not a pissing contest with who's going to win this. Nobody's going to win this. But they did get groomed. They got groomed by an ACO from another town. They were groomed by our own ACO, and when I asked, and I spend numerous hours there, hundreds of hours there, "Why are you grooming the dogs? Why don't you just pay somebody to groom the dogs?" Her comment, and I was in favor of it, she said, "Do you know how much it costs to groom them? I can groom them, I know how to do it." She had a grooming table there. I saw her, myself groomed those dogs twice. Now, I know that isn't a lot, and maybe she did it more than that, but I saw her with my own eyes. So don't question the veracity of what I'm saying. I won't tolerate it. And in terms of, I have some concerns. Who was taking all these pictures if people weren't allowed to go into the kennels? Who was the one taking all these pictures? If it was anyone who went in and saw conditions were so bad, what did they do about it? Anybody report it within the two years?
Yeah, went to do it.
Excuse me?
I thought you were asking.
It was a rhetorical question.
Okay, well, I thought you were asking, sorry.
Did anybody report it? Did anybody take corrective action? No. We waited, it became a big thing, and then we all get on board. I applaud everyone who wants to make a change and to do something for these dogs. These dogs were not abused, they weren't, they were not put, the only time they would take it out and put in crates was when the runs were cleaned, which was on a daily basis done by the ACO. And remember, we had, at the time, we had one, and we had an assistant, who seems to not be involved in any of this at the present time. But they were not put in the crates. The pictures of them in the crates piled one on top of the other was the day that they were picked up from the home and brought in, was not every day that they were put in these crates. So I think it's very important that when we're all fighting for the welfare of dogs, which is, which we have to do to protect them, but no one's come to me and said, "What did you see? What did you, what you..." I saw those two little white dogs. I wasn't allowed to touch them, but they were in the ACO's office when she was combing them, when she was putting the medicine on them, so...
When was this, though? Was this-
Could we not, this is not a, this is not a Q and A, and Ms. Ulisio, I would ask that you-
Thank you.
-that you conclude or wrap it up, please.
And I felt that I needed to come, not to defend anybody, but to give you what I saw, what I saw, and what I know is the truth. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions afterwards that people have to ask me, but I thank you. And I do thank you for your concern. I'm not going to negate the pictures that we see, I don't have, I don't have the ability to, you know, to judge those, but thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ulisio.
Hello, my name is Marina Bagliori, 1191 Merridon Avenue, Southington, Connecticut. Can I respond to a lady to Old Town Council? So I'm a local groomer, and some of you know. I've been in Cheshire for 22 years. I offer ACO free grooming for the last 23 years. And the funny part, I don't know how Cheshire ACO looked because she never contacted me and never asked for my help. I did help for many years, part-time ACO, I went at night to groom my self-dog for many years, posted on my website because I own Dog Rescue. And a couple of your counseling coming to my shop, and my big sign saying, "So," to respond to a lady who been before, "This is a lie with nobody coming, because I'm coming to all events, to the state, and offering groom for free, myself and my goals." So, back to the story, I want to write something to speak tonight, but I decided to speak from my heart. As an animal lover who been doing this for 22 years, working from New York and all another states of Connecticut and working with a lot of ACO, this is not acceptable and completely heartbreaking. I can't sleep at night, and I don't know how ACO, Chief of Police, and all of you who speak in last meeting saying, "You animal lover, and you want to take care of the dog." How you all knows for two and a half years with this dog being abused, neglected, we have no simple things. We didn't have no food, we didn't have grooming, no vet records, no socialization. And today, if you look back, and I tell to everybody back in the meeting, on March 23rd, if you go look in the statement, one of your members saying, "What is no smell in the town? April did a great job." And 100%, then Chief of Police who supervise ACO saying, "What, no problem in the town. We take 28 dogs surrounding from the owner, but we finish with 32 dogs because dogs become pregnant in town." Pound. How is possible and can be explained what place would dog have to be safe and secure, and we're teaching people of responsibilities? Dog can become pregnant. Look in the lullaby pictures everybody holding. She been abused and sexually- She been abused and sexually assaulted, but Chief of Police saying it's a puppy play. My mind can understand this. My heart is burning. Puppy play to be sexually abused in town, Cheshire? And you all saying you're animal lovers and you all knew about this? How is this possible, Cheshire? I want to ask question, who is responsible for this dogs? I know attorney talking about condition of the town and pound, but at this point, we're not looking in the wall because wall you can change. You can change a floor, but you can't change life of this dog. And Chief of Police state in the meeting, he's saying what this dog not adaptable because we not socialize, we peeing, so we look very tired. So back to the statement what you release, before our meeting in December, you say all this 23 dog been adopted to happy family. Do you have a proof of this pictures? Because as the owner of the rescue, doing this for 23 years, you cannot adopt 23 dogs who didn't been abused and neglected and didn't have any communication for the people in the next couple of weeks. It's involved a lot of people and a lot of help. I don't know about anybody else, but I offer my help to everybody to post it on the website, grooming. I have a proof. I can put on my website proof, when I groomed dogs in a pound, Cheshire, and I know with volunteers, you probably don't remember me, I work in this pound, groom this dog, and offer free help for anybody in state of Connecticut. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bagliore.
Hi, my name's Amy Lynn Gentile. I'm from Barkhamsted, Connecticut, 15 Chisop Lane.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you give me your name one more time?
Amy Lynn Gentile.
Thank you.
I'm a groomer. I offer my services to, I volunteer my services for free when cases like this happen. I got no, I had no response, but I am just very heartbroken that all the people that were involved in this turned a blind eye on these dogs. This was when she came in. That was when she was taken away from her owner. These dogs look better with their owner than with this ACO. And I'm sorry, if you can turn a blind eye on that, and if this woman over here can say that they got groomed, do you call that groomed? Do you really call that groomed? And she said, "Oh, money?" There are so many groomers that I know that would volunteer their time. It's a lot of work when I get dogs like this. It takes me at least probably four or five hours. And then you have to work sometimes with a veterinarian if they have to be sedated or anything, but really, we offer our time. And I'm sorry, but... That's the little dog when she came in.
You really have to be on page so we can...
But you can't really see it, I know. And that is her after she was injured. And if you can just go to sleep at night and think that this is okay with your ACO, I'm sorry. I'll hold a picture for you. But I'm so devastated for these animals, because I do a lot with certain rescues and I help out, and they'll call me and they'll say, "Hey, Amy, can you come bathe some kittens? They have fleas," or, "Hey, Amy, this dog just came off the street and she's really matted." And I go in there and this ACO, the ACOs are on it. They call me right away. The dog gets bathed, gets groomed, put on the website, and gets a home, not two years. And I don't understand, first of all, I don't understand how, sorry, I don't understand how these shelters, pounds, or your ACO, your Cheshire, how you can put unneutered, unspayed dogs together. I don't know how you can, and not think something's going to happen. And I do understand there were two litters of puppies in the two years. I know one puppy died. I believe in my heart and in just, in my soul, that the dog I just showed you was probably abused by the male dogs in there, and she broke her back, or she broke her neck, or she pulled the nerve, and then what did they want to do? Because the money, the money wasn't there. Oh, let's just euthanize her because her life doesn't mean anything. Okay, that's not right. Anything like dry eye, any little issues like that, that doesn't call for euthanasia. I mean, that's medication that they might have to have all their life, but she should be accounted for it. You all should be accounted for it. The Chief of Police should be accounted for it. 200 feet away from the animal control station, and you guys don't say that there's anything wrong there. I know I can't sleep at night. I know that it's made my heart burn to help more dogs and more animals, because this should never, ever, ever happen, because you're paying somebody through the state to take care of these animals. And she just, she failed. You all failed. You're all accountable, and I think that you all should be arrested, and I think that everybody else should, you need to remove your seats and go somewhere else, get a new ACO, get new people, people that really care, because...
Ms. Gentile, could you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, I will wrap it up. I just hope that you can go home and find it in your heart that all dogs' lives, all kittens' lives, all cats' lives matter. We have a huge crisis, but that ACO was supposed to take care of these animals, and she failed. I don't think the owner of the dogs failed because they looked a hell of a lot better with them.
Thank you, Ms. Gentile.
My name is Lori Ratchelis. I reside at 42 Harrison Road here in Cheshire. I first want to start out by saying that the pictures that we are showing tonight, every single picture here is from someone who entered into the pound within the past two years. These are not AI photos. These are real photos from people who entered into the shelter that have given us these pictures. So I just want to start out by saying that. I recently went through some town council meetings where it was brought to my attention that animal control and the situation of these 28 dogs was brought up. I read through the, I actually, I listened to the town council meeting dated 3/23/2004, so less than a year ago. At the town council meeting, Councilman Walsh stated that April does a great job there. The facility was neat and clean and very appropriate. Chief Dreyf noted in this meeting that 28 dogs entered into the shelter. They now, at that point, on March 23rd of '24, they now had 32, because as Chief Dreyf stated, they were locked in cages together and did quote-unquote "puppy things," leading to additional litters of puppies unwanted. Since this time, there have been other litters of puppies born at the shelter, one being this past October, one live birth, one died. Chief Dreyf also stated that these dogs were not socialized, and in the meeting stated, "I'm sure when they can be adopted out, many will be returned because they're not potty-trained nor are they socialized." So with that, what we know is that six dogs went to the Connecticut Humane Society. Seven were returned to the original owner. One went to the Vintage Pet Rescue in Rhode Island. Two adults died. One puppy died. One was adopted out by a local resident. Where are the remaining dogs? We all know with municipal shelters, that unsocialized animals, dogs and cats, are often euthanized. This is a fact. I plead with you all to let us know where those dogs are and are they alive? I plead with you tonight to please speak with your residents, with your advocates here who want to help, and though we are upset, it's the situation, and we plead with you to please speak with us. This is not the town that I live in and that I love and have loved for over 20 years. This saddens me that this has happened, and I hope we can work together. I hope we can do better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ratchelis.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lori Barnes. I reside at 532 East Johnson Avenue. I had something prepared to say, but a lot of people touched on everything. So to comment on what James said, this is just really bizarre. This whole thing is really bizarre. We live in a great town, and this entire thing is really, I mean, I don't have trust in our leadership. I really don't. I don't have trust in our leadership. I feel like there's a lot of backdoor conversations. There's no gag order. You absolutely can make a statement to us and say, "You're looking into it. You're looking into the allegations. You're doing this, and you're tight-lipped, and you say nothing." You can at least say something. You're all voted town officials, and that can go away. That can change when it's time to vote. I don't understand why nobody wants to speak, nobody wants to say anything, and they're always protecting their own hides, their own, your own, your own. I don't know if you're listening to the attorney or who you're listening to, but when it comes down to it, these animals had nobody speaking for them. I understood that we took it on and we said, "Okay, we're going to do this." We may not have had the resources, but the ACO was the front line to say, "Hey, I don't have the resources to do all this. I need help," and to say something to somebody. And this is just bizarre, wrong on so many levels. I see the lack of interest in this going on and on from people that are sitting up there. I see it. I wouldn't, I don't want to sit here. I'd rather be sitting home watching Rookie with my husband right now. But I'm telling you, this is not going to go away. More people have taken interest. The numbers have climbed. People want to know, and especially because you're not saying anything, you're not responding. Excuse me. It's not going to go away, and I'm just letting you know. That's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Hi, my name is Carol Ann Seder. I live on 57 Rosemary Lane, Cheshire. Back in 1976, when the previous dog warden, Richard Wees, started his job, me and three Waterbury peoples started a volunteer group. The dog pound was located at the dump, and we would go down there and chop ice when the furnace didn't work. We would be up to our ankles in mud. My father brought pieces of wood to go around the dog pound so that we could walk on it. We worked very hard. When the heater didn't, when the furnace didn't work, we brought space heaters. And one time, there was a fire in the furnace, and unfortunately, a Cheshire firefighter would die going en route to this fire. The furnace was then fixed. We were very, very happy when the new dog pound was going to be built. Looking at these pictures, I can say the dog pound down at the dump was in better condition than that. The runs were always clean. The dogs had food. When the dogs were sick, the animal group, we raised money, we had them spayed, we would take them to the vet. The town of Cheshire has a lot of money for other things. They should have money to take care of these animals, and it's really discouraging to see a beautiful dog pound that we once had when it first opened turned out like that. If a dog pound down at the dump can look better, I don't understand what's going on. This kind of reminds me of, my father was abused in a nursing home. Nothing was done. The state didn't do anything. But if I had done that to my father, I would have been in jail, and it seems the same here. If this is true, that the dog warden and people that are responsible for this did something, they're not going to get punished. It's just like my father. And I have to live every day, no, my father was abused and the state of Connecticut didn't care. And this is what these people and myself feel. These dogs are abused and nobody is being responsible for this. It's just not fair. The town of Cheshire needs to do better for the animals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Seder.
Hi, my name is Lisette, 499 Mountain Road. I didn't want to talk because I am very mad. I am very mad of the stuff that I have been hearing these days. To read what I have read is just horrible. And by the way, nice report, but you didn't mention who is going to be held accountable, because that is what I'm waiting. Your report sounded very nice, but you are not giving us answers. Someone definitely needs to be held accountable for whatever happened to those animals. Whoever did this to these animals should feel ashamed. And as a member of this community, as a taxpayer, I refuse to pay the salary of incompetent Because those people are our employees. We pay their salary with our taxes. We are talking about laziness, irresponsibility, but you know what? It's more about the lack of empathy that all of you have shown. Just to finish, it is unethical for those people, the woman, you know, working at the ACO, to receive her check when she doesn't do anything. It is unethical. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I ask just one question, and then anyone else speaking? Okay. Just one question, is that okay? I just want to ask the town council, will you partner with us now? Will you communicate with us now? That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Melendez, conversely, I have a question for you. I know you said you would supply us with the original photos.
Yes.
Do you know if those are date, time, or location stamped?
I can get all the dates and put them on.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
That would be very helpful.
Every one of them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Town Manager and Mayor and Town Council members. It's hard for me to sit here and listen to this type of thing because I did my master's degree in pet therapy. I had two dogs and two cats. My dog worked here in the school system in Cheshire. My dog worked in the library with me. And looking at these pictures breaks my heart. For me not to come up and say anything, it's too much. I think it's clear to me as a town official and a member of the zoning board in the past and historic district commission, now a constable, it seems clear to me the action committee of some type is needed. And I worked, a prior job of mine was mediation arbitration for the Better Business Bureau, and we found that you don't always have to hire a lawyer. You could use a mediation to solve problems in a sensible and caring manner. I would be willing to work with that, and I think what's needed is communication. And I think what's needed is communication, clearly. And I would suggest that be done very soon. And I would be glad to help. But I think if we can get one member from each dog group here and work with the town, I think all this stuff, all this type of thing could be remedied. I feel sorry for the animals that were died and were abused, as appears to have been done. I'm not making a judgment call here. I'm just saying I think we need action as soon as possible. And I would like to hear more about that. Is that something you think could be done, Mayor Talbot?
Thank you, Ms. Sheen. I appreciate your comments. Yes?
Thank you.
Just real quick, what a lot of my friends are asking is, what actually happened to the puppies? Are they alive or were they euthanized?
I don't have an answer for you this evening.
That's not public information?
Hello?
I mean, isn't everyone interested in what happened to those puppies?
Yes.
And will there or will there not be charges filed considering the amount of probable cause?
This is a public comment session. Members of the public have been allowed to speak tonight. And as you heard our town attorney earlier, because of ongoing litigation, the town council will not be engaging in back and forth dialogue.
I understand.
But thank you, Mr. Bagliari.
But it would be like keeping a police officer on the job who is going around robbing houses. It's the same analogy. And it's poor.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, the approval of minutes from, I believe, and keep me honest, the December 11th as well as the December 23rd meetings?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please, from the council?
Yeah.
Moved by Mr. Jeng, seconded by Mr. Velliber. All those in favor. Motion passes unanimously by those present. Brings us to item number five, the consent calendar for January 14th. Mr. Jengs.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Be it resolved that the town council approves resolution number 011425-1, consent calendar for January 14th, 2025. Be it resolved that the town council approves the consent calendar for January 14th, 2025 as follows.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr.?
I think you have a second.
Okay. Ms. Pearson, thank you. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously by those present. Brings us to number seven, the school building construction update. I do not see Mr.?
There he was. There he is.
Oh, there he is. Good evening, Mr. Gussenberg. Good to see you. Post our groundbreaking ceremonies at both of the schools.
Successful.
Thank you for that, by the way.
Yep, that one's on.
It was a very nice event, very well handled. Thank you.
Thank you. I was pleased we got it in. I was pleased that the weather somewhat cooperated. We had some, some nice pictures and I thought some nice press from it. So I was happy to see that done. Short presentation for you this evening. Hopefully in the near future, I'll start bringing some pictures for you to see. At our December meeting, which I wasn't at, I was in California with the family, but at the December meeting, there were a number of bids that were approved for the North End, site work, concrete, structural steel, drywall, and general trades. And for the Norton School, site work, concrete, and structural steel. Our ONG is presently reviewing a number of other bid packages that have come in. And we have a meeting this Thursday. I expect that we'll have six or seven at each building that we'll be approving as we move ahead. All told, we need 12 in this round so that we're fully operational and up and running. Work has begun. I was over at Norton School site today, a fair amount of clearing of the site, some movement of soil. And we should start seeing concrete poured early February, from what they're telling me right now, with steel to follow soon thereafter. And that's where we're at right now. We're right on schedule. The winter so far is cooperating. And, you know, hopefully we'll stay right on, on schedule. It appears that we have some good bidders who are moving ahead quickly and things should continue on. And as I said, I think in the next month or two, I'll start bringing you some pictures and start seeing the steelwork go up and some walls go up. And that'll be the exciting part.
Questions for Mr. Gussenberg. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Jengs?
Thanks, Rich. It was very nice, the groundbreaking ceremony. It would have been on a nicer day, but I think it worked out really well.
Nice to know, Corvina.
Yeah. I saw a big pile of dirt at the bottom of an icy hill.
Yeah, that was a little slippery. Nobody fell.
No, thank God. Just, I did see somebody had posted, you know, too bad they can't see what's going on over in the North End School because of the green and everything. Is there, and I don't know if it's, you know, the way to have like little, I know we talked about it for, at Norton, they're going to be having little windows in the fencing area so the kids could look and see the progress. Is that possible? Or is it more of a traffic issue or?
I'll look into it. I saw that comment. I did go over there today. If you went onto the Jarvis Street side.
Right.
There is an area there where the trucks come in and everything that you can look in and see the site.
Now, I think, I think a lot of people are getting more and more excited about it. And I think, you know, once they start seeing, you know, things going up, it'll be more exciting to them.
Norton, obviously, is a different issue because it's behind the building.
Yeah.
And so you can't get back there to really see what's going on at all. The students will be able to watch it.
Yeah, I think that's important for the students to watch it, too. But I'm just thinking the public who, taxpayers are putting this thing up, might want to see it, too. And I just think, you know, if there's a way that we could do it where it's safe so that they're not slowing down their cars and, you know, causing traffic.
I'll bring it up with ONG and see what can be done. I did see when I was there today, you know, there's slits in it, mainly, I think, for the wind.
Right.
Than anything else. But no areas that you can clearly see through. You can see through it somewhat, but it's not like you can really watch the thing. But I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Mr. Jengs.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I saw a post, I think you might have posted or your committee might have posted as far as the ONG picture, or the flyer that ONG seemed, I guess they maybe handed them out around the neighborhood or something like that.
Right, yeah.
I just wanted to comment on, you guys have done a remarkable job at communicating what's happening and showing the community what things are going to be looking like or, you know, we hope to look like. So, you know, to you and your committee and to the partners we have, you guys are doing a remarkable job with that. And I'm just, you know, thank you and keep it up.
Well, those brochures, they are in the process of handing those out to all the neighbors. I had given you copies of those when I was in in December. And the key thing is the communication that we want to all of the people who live there is we understand we want to be a good neighbor. We know that at times there may be an issue or a question that comes up. Here's the people you can get to and you can get directly to them. And so you don't feel that you're getting a runaround, going to others and being told to call somewhere else. So there are people from ONG and Arcadis. You have their name, their address, or their email, their phone numbers are right there if there's any issues or problems that come up. So far, been very minimal, but we're just starting the process.
Thank you, Mr. Jengs. Mr. Gussenberg, just a quick comment, and this is way out of left field. One of the things you talked about doing photos and updates from the site. I would assume on some level that would include, like we did with Bartlam Park South, some sort of drone footage. The only comment I would make is if that is in the offing, that based on recent events in New Jersey, you may just want to alert the chief or the police department that you are going to be doing some drone surveillance and capturing footage over the two sites. That way they can easily, you know, if somebody does call and say, we've got drones over Cheshire, that, you know, we know about it. It's, you know, it's, it's okay. It's, you know, we're doing updates from our two building sites.
Yeah. It hasn't been raised recently, but it was raised a while back that once we got construction going, we'd want to get some drone footage. And I'll be posting that and regular pictures onto our Facebook page. But yeah, I'll.
Yeah, maybe helpful both to the PD and, and the town manager's office that, so they're not getting calls, that, that people are aware and they can allay any fears that, that people may have by seeing these unidentified flying objects in the sky, so to speak.
Good point.
Sure, Mr. Walsh. Since he brought up the drone, have you thought about even just putting a camera there that can be viewed online? Or that way, you don't have to cut, cut a thing in the fence.
That, that was discussed with ONG when we first interviewed with them. And that was something that we had talked about at that time. Again, since we're just gearing up, we haven't pursued that at all. But yeah, that has been.
Well, I think, because then you could just keep that camera steady and then see, you know, later on, see the whole thing go up. And I think, I don't think it's an expensive thing to do, but I think that would be a cool way. That way, you know, people can go online and say, oh, let's see what they're doing today.
It's also a security.
Yes.
Thing that we wanted, yeah. So that is something that we're going to.
Well, that's what I want, yeah.
The entire construction from beginning to end.
Yeah. You can do a time lapse.
See how fast it really went up, right?
I was going to say, that would be the ultimate time lapse, yeah. A two-year lock-in.
Well, well, hopefully only a year and a half.
With that, I'll give you my normal, please pass along the thanks of the council to, to your, not only yourself, but your entire committee for their continued efforts. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Moves us to item number eight, the new business category. Item 8A is the approval of bidding requirements. Ms. Pearson.
Be it resolved that the town council approves resolution number 011424-2. Be it resolved that pursuant to section 78C1 of the town charter, the town council maintains the requirements for sealed bids for February 1st, 2025, through January 31st, 2026, at $25,000 bid limit for both non-construction related services and construction related services. And be it further resolved that in accordance with section 78C9 and section 78C10 of the town charter, the town council authorizes the town manager, his designee, and the Cheshire Public Schools to purchase goods or services for the town without bids, one, through the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, DAS, and two, through or in conjunction with the other municipalities, qualified bids, RFPs, and regional and federal government purchasing entities, including but not limited to US Government General Services Administration, Capital Regional Council of Governments and any successor organization, Connecticut Library Consortium, Library Connection Incorporated, National Joint Powers Alliance, Council of Government of the Central Nagatuck Valley and any successor organization, Capital Region Education Council, Western State Contracting Alliance, National Association of State Procurement, Officials Cooperative Purchasing Organization, Houston-Galveston Area Cooperative, Universal Service Administration Company, Sourcewell, and Omnia Partners.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And Ms. Pearson, back to you for?
Yeah, this is generally, my understanding is this is standard bid approval limit, 25,000. It's the same as last year. It has not changed. The state can make decisions to change this, but they haven't thus far. If there's anything else that Mr. Kimball would like to add?
No, that covers it well. Again, it now, we used to have two different amounts for construction or non-construction related. But now with the $25,000 cap, and they're both at that level, it's, it's just a uniform $25,000 bid limit for either of those services. That's correct.
Any questions or further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor. Motion passes unanimously by those present. Moves us to item 8B, Fair Housing. And Mr. Wolf, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be it resolved that the town council approves resolution number 011425-3. Be it resolved that the town council adopts the fair housing policy as follows. Whereas all American citizens are afforded a right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice, and whereas state and federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, ancestry, marital status, age, mental or physical disability, lawful source of income, sexual orientation, familial status, be given equal access to rental and homeownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And whereas the town of Cheshire is committed to upholding these laws and realizes that these laws must be supplemented by an affirmative statement publicly endorsing the right of the people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Cheshire hereby endorses a fair housing policy to ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, and obtain financing for adequate housing of their choice on a non-discriminatory basis. And be it further resolved that the town manager of Town of Cheshire or his or her designated representative responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to the victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice in the Town of Cheshire.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Wolf, back to you for discussion.
I think that's, in the narrative, it pretty much explains it. I don't know if Mr. Kimball has anything further to add. No, I would just add, I appreciate this. This is an annual confirmation and resolution of the town council. We use this document for certain grant opportunities, including the Small Cities Grant. You have to have on file a current annually adopted fair housing policy. And so that's why we do this every January, along with a couple of other annual items that we do. That's right.
Mr. Jengs.
I think I've asked this before, Sean, but I've forgotten. I'm sorry. Does, I know that we have to say this, this declaration, which is, which seems more appropriate for planning and zoning, obviously. But is, do they say it as well or is it just us?
That's a good question. I don't think you've asked me that one before either.
Oh, really?
I'm not sure. I can find out. I know that the resolution that must be included for small cities and other things is a, is a resolution adopted by the town council.
Yeah.
But I can ask, unless Attorney Dofio knows, offhand, I can confirm whether they have any approval authority over that.
They're subject to it, but they don't formally adopt it.
Okay.
The town council adopting it makes them subject to it. Because the town council is the legislative body of the town. The only, the only, they don't really have jurisdiction to adopt it by statute, so.
Right.
But they are subject to it.
Right, okay.
Yep. And the regulations say that.
Yeah. It always struck me as odd that we say this rather than they say it. But I get what you're saying, yeah. All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor. Motion passes unanimously by those present. Item C is the annual notice of conflicts of interest. Included in your packets is the charter and the code of ordinances. I will read section 9-3, which is the charter's conflicts of interest. Any elected or appointed officer or any employee of the town who has a conflict of interest, as set forth in section 10-1, conflicts of interest and standards of conduct of the town's code of ordinances, as amended, shall, in addition to the requirements of section 10-1, disclose that interest to the council, who shall record such disclosure upon the official record of their meetings. Violation by any such officer or employee of the provisions of this section shall be grounds for removal. Violations of this section with the knowledge expressed or implied of any person or corporation participating in such contract, transaction, or decision shall render the same voidable by the council or by a court of competent jurisdiction. This is our annual conflict of interest notice. And just a note for the clerk that we probably should. And just a note for the clerk that we probably should take a look at gender neutrality with regard to the charter. Section 9(3), there is wording in there in the second to last sentence, and I thank Ms. Kramer for that catch. With that, we'll move to item D, which is the acceptance of East Mitchell as a town road. Mr. Jinks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be it resolved that the town council approves Resolution Number 011425-4. Be it resolved the town council accepts the extension of East Mitchell Avenue as a town road, conditional upon the filing of a maintenance bond and recording of the warranty deed for the roadway and storm drainage and sightline easements, free and clear of all encumbrances.
Thank you, Mr. Jinks. Thank you, Mr. Velliber. Mr. Jinks, to you for discussion, please.
This is just an attempt to expand my district, really, by adding this road. No, so this is... Yes, this is just a process, obviously, that we go through when the contractor is legally done with the road, they hand it over to the town. It's been through planning and zoning, been through our engineer, and approved the construction of the proper construction of the road, so it's just us formally accepting the property, more or less.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Which moves us to item E on the agenda, discussion and approval of income levels for the 2025 local elderly tax credit program. Mr. Jinks.
Be it resolved the town council approves Resolution Number 011425-5. Be it resolved the town council approves the following changes to the property tax relief qualifying incomes in the ordinance sections 17-6b, 17-6c, or c1, and 17-13 for the 2024 grand list. So this is basically, the state is going to set the...
Before you do that, let's... Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Jinks. Thank you, Mr....
Velliber and Mr. Jinks, discussion.
I'm going to have Sean step in on this, but this is essentially our tax rebate or tax program for, you know, residents that are, you know, lower income, or, you know, that could qualify for deduction. We, a couple of years ago, we increased the range in the top end for a single, for an individual, and also for married couples. The state adjusts their kind of levels every year, and we therefore then kind of adjust ours. As it is, our credit is much more generous than the state's.
That's correct. And so, just a reminder, and this will be in my town manager's report as well, but the period for folks to apply, and as Mr. Jinks indicated, for elderly, which is 65-plus, and 100% disabled, tax credit runs, the application period runs from February 1st to May 15th. So we always want to take an opportunity to spread the word, to make sure eligible folks, or if you think you may be eligible, contact our assessor's office to see if you qualify for the tax relief. And also, as Mr. Jinks indicated, and as we discussed at the Budget Committee before this meeting, the Town of Cheshire goes beyond the state, both in terms of credits and the income ranges that are eligible. And so you'll see on the second half of that resolution there, this year's recommended changes, and on the left-hand column, what last year's, okay, really, that's this year and next year's, but you understand, the two years there, where those have been increased with respect to, so the tax credit amounts are kept the same, but the eligibility has been increased at the same approximate rate as the rate that the state increased their brackets, so they increased theirs by just about 3.03%. So we held that 3% across each of the income brackets, and you'll see for the single credit, incomes as high as $79,325 are eligible, and for the married, that's $84,954. So again, much further than the roughly 50, mid-50,000s that the state allows or requires. So we've increased those by the same 3%, and that's, this was forwarded on with the recommendation from the Budget Committee before this meeting. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Walsh, sorry.
Thank you. This is my annual statement about the word elderly being 65 and over. I'm sure Mr. Todd would agree.
I resemble that rumor.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's a state issue, though, more than, and maybe the state should start looking into what's elderly and what's senior. But I would also like to, I know we gave 3%, but, you know, with the increase in taxes this past year, and probably, again, with the debt from the schools hitting, I would hope that maybe we can relook at that again for the following year, so to see if maybe there's a little bit more we can give to some of the seniors in here. I mean, it's important that we make sure that the seniors stay in this town, and if they can't afford it, then, you know, it's going to cost all of us more money. So I would, I would like to see if we can take some time in the coming year during the budget cycle to see if there's something we can do to work on that a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. I like to think of myself as youthfully challenged. Mr. Mylone.
Thank you. I did, when we were in Budget Committee, we did talk a little bit about the amount of, I didn't hear you mention it before, Jim, I think it's an important number, the amount of relief that's been provided in taxes last year. Did you mention it earlier? Because I missed it.
I'm happy to do that if you'd like.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile to put that on the record, because it is substantial.
Sure. So this current year that we're in, the total amount that the elderly and disabled tax credit amounted to was about $517,000. Just for comparison's sake, last year, fiscal '24, that was $460,591, and the year before that, it was $385,245. Between those last two years was the year that we made some of the more significant adjustments to, that the council adopted that year, increasing the credit amounts and eligibility ranges. And again, if you recall, at the time, we were trying to anticipate what that impact would be, very hard to calculate, both because of, you know, hard data on who out there is eligible from an income level or even age level, but also who might actually come to apply, because obviously, that also takes knowing about the program and coming in and actually filling out and giving your, you know, your personal financial information to make sure that you qualify. So we do very much encourage folks to apply for all the reasons that Mr. Walsh and everyone else has said, but those are the numbers in answer to your question, Mr. Mylone.
Thank you, Mr. Mylone. I think that's important to get on the record.
Is, it's substantial, and it's continued to increase, which I think we should all be proud of, and as Don said, if we can do more work and it's acceptable, that's, I'm sure we'll all agree to that.
Yes. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Velliber?
Thank you. I just want to agree with, you know, what's been done here. I think, I think the one thing that, you know, for as long as I've been on the council, it's been nice to see that that Cheshire does look out for its elderly. I just bet, you know, just, but its elderly residents, but ultimately, just to, you know, to see that we not only, you know, are we looking at these credits, but obviously, going above and beyond what those state limits are to try to help facilitate, you know, keeping those taxes for the elderly and disabled down as best we can, and we'll see what we can do, obviously, to keep that going. But as you can, as Sean had mentioned, you're looking at those numbers jumping by $100,000 a year in terms of its applicability. So that's, you know, something that, you know, if we can continue to be able to do that and help our residents, elderly and disabled residents, that's, I think, a great thing for all of us. So, thank you.
And with that as the last word, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Item number F is the review and approval of the public gathering permit. Ms. Pearson.
Be it resolved, the town council approves Resolution Number 011425-6. Be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the public gathering permit as presented and attached.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Walsh, thank you. Ms. Pearson, to you for discussion, please.
Yeah, I know Parks and Rec has been, the commission has been working on this, and the director of Parks and Recreation has been working on this for a number of, or for a year at least, with the town manager. My understanding is part of this resulted from outside groups using some of our public areas, and this new permit will provide a document by which the town and the director of Park and Rec can ensure that when police are needed, that that has been checked off and approved by the police department. When fire is needed, that is checked off and approved by the fire department. When Department of Public Works is required to provide some support, that is approved and checked off by Department of Public Works. So this just ensures that all departments are aware of an event that is occurring on our public properties. It does exclude the schools, it does exclude other, for example, the Harmon Youth Center, I believe, and so buildings themselves, the pavilions, that is a whole separate process. But if you are looking to hold an event in Cheshire Park or Bartlam, then you would, then you are not necessarily a town entity, then you would need to fill out this gathering permit, just to ensure that everyone is aware and that approvals from all respective offices have been vetted. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Kimball?
Sure, yes, I appreciate that. It was a wonderful summary, though, but yes, we have been working on this for a better part of a year. This was an initiative I kicked off a little over a year ago, and have been in consultation, primarily with John, with Park and Rec, as many of these events, as you can imagine, are typically larger outdoor events on usually town, you know, park and rec facilities, like a field or an athletic field. But it could be, you know, there could be others. So, so one thing I think, I want to just kind of clarify with respect to the permit, it is for those events that are 50 or more people. There's also some discretion that the departments can exercise with respect to applicability. This is not intended to cover, you know, your Cheshire youth football practice on a Wednesday night, right? Then we expressed, we got a lot of wonderful feedback, both from Park and Rec Commission, but also all of our department heads who collaborated on this project, and feedback from the schools for clarity of what types of events would apply. And this will also be something of an evolving process. I think we're going to learn as we go. I wanted this before you, it's really going to be a staff-driven permit, but I wanted the concept to be before the council, so it has the endorsement of the council. But we also hopefully maintain that flexibility to make some tweaks to it and amendments, department by department, as things change or things are discovered. We had a very similar permit process in my former community in Simsbury, and it was very helpful, really as a communication tool, primarily between departments, to make sure that the departments are all on the same page, and then also the event holders themselves, or event planners can count on a smoother event, you know, the right resources where they need to be, and not that sort of day of, you know, this department didn't know this was happening, and now we don't have someone collecting the trash, or there's no police presence, we didn't realize it would be quite this large. It gets everybody quite literally on the same page. I also wanted to clarify that, at least initially, and in part because Mr. Glidden, also of the former community that I was in before, the Planning and Zoning Department actually accepted these applications originally, initially, and then helped the distribution. That's how we're going to kick it off. I think it may evolve, because as we said, many of these are going to be Park and Rec related, as Mike kind of shows John how it works best going forward. We may transition that in the future. Again, I see that as kind of an administrative change that we can make within the permit. But for now, the first point of contact would be the Planning and Zoning Department. Again, very used to receiving permit applications, very used to distributing those among departments. And in a perfect world, we'd like to also see our ViewPermit software system implemented, so this can become an electronic permit, easier for the distribution among departments, as ViewPermit does now with building permits, but also easier for the customer, for the event planner, to be able to take care of this, a lot of the application process remotely and from home. So that is the intention, and I appreciate, you know, certainly any questions or comments you may have, but we're excited in anticipation of a number of events this year to have this in place for 2025.
Mr. Velliber, and then Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. I know we've been working on this, and I think this is, I think this was even kicked around when I was still maybe involved, the liaison to Park and Rec. But this was something that I think was, you know, I think it's good, but I just have a question, when it comes to utilizing the town resources, and obviously, this is intended for contemplated events, things that are coming up. I guess my question is, how does the town, how would the town handle if we're having, for example, let's say a protest or something, a group gathering occurred on these public properties, obviously, they're not getting a permit, you know, at that point. I guess, how did the, you know, the town, how would the town handle something like that? I mean, unless you're going, you're not going to go around going, okay, you know, you need six weeks in advance of your protest, but I mean, if there was a spontaneous protest utilizing the town fields, does that, how does that possibly play out? You know, because when I think of gathering, obviously, this is a structured gathering, but what if you had a non-structured gathering on town property?
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would continue to handle those as we have in the past, right? I mean, we respond readily with any necessary police presence. In a perfect world, there's some advance notice, or there's at least, usually with those events, there are, you know, materials circulated in advance, advertising the event. We've had that happen here in town a number of times. So, no, there's no expectation that six weeks in advance, you'd have a formal, they're welcome to do so, clearly, but this is more for your, even, again, pseudo-town-run events, chamber-partnered events, like the Fall Festival is a good example, where, as many of us who have helped organize that event know, there's so many moving parts, there's so many departments that touch the event. It is great to just sort of have what's agreed upon on paper, so that there's not, "I was pretty sure we asked for this, and we didn't see that," or there were, you know, in, things like that. I mean, we've had some events at Cheshire Park, the Cycle Cross event was an example, where this really would have been helpful, to make sure everyone was on the same page, and departments were all informed of the expectations. And also, the organizers are asserting at least what they expect the attendance to be. Many of these events, and the intention is, these are really mostly open to the public, that you or I could just probably wander over and watch. So some of these are hard to necessarily predict with accuracy, the number of attendees, but organizers have a pretty good sense, is it going to be 100 people, is it going to be 500? And any of that advanced information the town can have means we can best protect the town's assets and public safety going forward. But, yeah, I think one-off events like an impromptu protest would be just handled, the traditional way of response, as opposed to a lot of planning, unless, you know, like I said, public safety notwithstanding. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh?
That was part of my question, like, I mean, if they do a, if you decide to have a group gathering on a sidewalk, say in front of the town hall, or in front of Bartlam Park, or in front of the high school, that's not anything that we would be involved in until they get onto the school property or the town property, correct?
Right. I mean, no, it's certainly not in any, if a permit, you know, not in any denial way, right? There's a constitutional right to gather and assemble, this is in no way infringing on that right. This is more akin to planned events, your lacrosse jamborees, your, even, and I know we talked about school grounds, things like Music in Motion, there's some overlap and some practice that happens over on the Bartlam Park side. Again, some of this will evolve as we go forward, and the schools have been great. I know what we said initially, that was some of the feedback, we're not putting on school grounds, at least initially, but I've been talking with John Pericino and others about how we could evolve this to help them with some events. There's a lot of crossover events, the half marathon's a great example, right? Yeah, that's on school ground, but it's all throughout town, and there's major impacts. And we've always had a practice of preparing and having an emergency management plan in advance of those, but this ensures that, hey, you know what, there should be trash receptacles at each of the crossings, there should be porta-potties at each of those, all of those are listed here. If there's food trucks at the event, you know, Chesapeake Cut is listed here for that purpose, and it just makes sure all of the relevant departments, and in the case of Chesapeake Cut, you know, outside agencies are also involved.
There's no additional fees unless they need to hire police, or...
Right, some of the fee, right, right now, specifically for the permit, no.
No fees, okay.
Historically, though, right, and the departments have been able to, you know, charge for services, none of that changes, but if there's a certain amount that's needed for two maintainers to be part of an event, to be collecting trash because of the numbers that are expected, groups have historically, you know, been asked to pay for that. This also puts it onto one spot and confirms the arrangement and the agreement, but that, yeah, that doesn't, that's not changing, and there's no additional fee for the permit existing.
So is the planning department overseeing this, or...
For now, yes, and then part of that is just because Mike has a lot of experience doing it. You know, we had all of the events that would happen at the Simsbury Performing Arts Center up there, and the Talke Mountain Events, and all those things would involve a permit just like this. Differences up there, every single one of them would go to the Board of Selectmen for approval. We have not included that in this, because I don't think that is really, and I think that's a little more of a cumbersome process to have every... that's a little more of a cumbersome process, to have every of these sometimes smaller events of 50 people come, have to wait for a town council meeting.
Right.
So we'd like to handle those administratively, and.
This application will be online, too, for people to fill out?
It'll be online to fill out. Right now, it's in a PDF form, and it can be fillable form.
Okay.
I would love to get it into View Permit, that's kind of one of my own personal goals for the next year.
Okay.
But we kind of have to have it set first, and then you can build it in one of those permit systems.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Brings us to item G, the acceptance and appropriation of a $750,000 urban grant award for an adaptive use field. Ms. Pearson.
Be it resolved, the Town Council approves resolution number 011425-7. Be it resolved, the Town of Cheshire hereby accepts and appropriates a grant administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection in the amount of $750,000 for an adaptive use field. And be it further resolved, Town of Cheshire may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate for a grant of 750,000 for an adaptive use field. And be it further resolved, that Town Manager Sean M. Kimball is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Cheshire to carry out the terms of such documents.
We have a motion from Ms. Pearson, we have a second from Mr. Jinks, and Ms. Pearson, I was going to go to you, but it looks to me like Mr. Martelli is raring to go with the microphone, so I will turn it to you.
I'm here to give you a quick background as to why we're doing this, again, because this has come before you once before. So State Bond Commission originally approved this funding back in December of 20, let's see, December, I'm sorry, in this past June, rather, of 2024, June 7th. And the language there stated this was for improvements to miracle fields in Bartlam Park. We went back to the Bond Commission through our state representatives, and we asked for the language to be changed, for it to be $750,000 for a grant and aid to the Town of Cheshire for the development of an adaptive use field in the Town of Cheshire. So the reasoning behind this is to allow for greater flexibility for the steering committee who, to be formed, steering committee, to direct where the best location for the adaptive field is to be within the community, versus locking us into Bartlam Park. It very well might be the best location at Bartlam Park, but this at least allows the flexibility. The funding is also going to be directed through the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, which we have a great relationship with, which we are administering several grants for currently. And also, that paperwork hasn't been received yet, so we're going to have three years to expend this funding, so we have plenty of time to think about it thoughtfully and come up with the best location within the community. So I'll be administering all that paperwork, but this allows Sean to execute everything on behalf of the community. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martelli. Mr. Vellaber.
Thank you. I think this is, this is great, because it gives us a little bit more flexibility. I know we've had some plans for Bartlam Park, and this may or may not fit within what we have there, but I think this is a great idea. And so with some other fields coming into, into play, either from some of the schools, or even from other open spaces that the town may have, this would be good. My question relates primarily to, and I assume the answer is yes, but a field like this, pardon me if I don't know the answer to this, but this is going to be like a turf field, right? I mean, the field is like a, it's not a natural field, like the current, like the challengers currently use up at Darcy School.
Correct. It would be a turf field that would be adaptive for all users, and so it would be fully handed up to accessible from the parking to the playing surface, so all user groups would be able to enjoy the facility.
And is it, is it multi-sports? That is, I mean, is it, is it striped for multi-sports, or is it primarily for baseball, you know, softball?
The fields that I've seen, yes, are striped for different sporting events, but I think that all of that will be fleshed out as we go through the design. We don't have a specific design or layout for it. There are other examples, which I, I understand we'll be doing a little field trip to take a look at other like facilities here in Connecticut, that we could tailor ours to what we kind of want to see, wherever we decide to locate it.
Thank you, because I wasn't sure what the, what the scope of this project, so there's a, there's opportunities for us to sort of decide what we want this field to be for and what it to look like, but it also is allowed to be more, more expansive than just, here's a baseball diamond.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I think we're fortunate where we have multiple locations, where we could potentially have this located in town, if Bartlam's not the chosen final location.
The one comment that I would make, Mr. Vellaber, is that the answer to your first question about the, it is, it is turf, but it's not turf like we have at Cheshire High School at McLaren, and it's not like what we have at Bartlam. You don't have that, that rubber underneath, because that, that kind of prohibits it from being wheelchair, exactly. So it is, it is different than the turf we are familiar with, let's put it that way. But great question, thank you.
It's not a turf, it's not a natural turf field, no, it is not.
Yeah. Anything else? Yes, Ms. Pearson, and then Mr. Mylone.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, I know Representative Liz Lenahan has worked tremendously for this, in support of this, this, bringing this miracle field, or now this adaptive use field to Cheshire. So just to thank her publicly for her support in making this happen. And I look forward to seeing what this committee decides in terms of where this field actually goes. I know, schools, we talked about that in budget earlier, that a school could potentially be a site. So again, that's all to be decided, but thank you for all your work on this as well.
Of course, happy to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson, and Mr. Mylone, I'm sorry.
No problem. And I agree, I'm very, very pleased that we were able to receive this grant, very pleased that we have flexibility with this revision to it, so we can, it may end up at Bartlam, as David just said, but it may not. It's going to be where it's best for the community. But you did mention at one point that we have three years to complete this, and that'll come and go very fast. So particularly since we haven't even decided where we're going with this yet, I'm just suggesting that we don't waste any time, get going on this right away, selecting a field, getting buy-in for that, getting it designed, getting it bid, and getting it constructed, so we use these funds in three years will be a challenge, and we'll probably be adding money to it, likely, because we won't have enough to finish it. So we'll have some work to do, and I think it's, it's, it's not a generous timeframe, so I would like to just make sure we're focused on, on the time associated with getting all of this done.
Thank you, Mr. Mylone, and I think appropriately enough, the Personnel Committee will soon be discussing the Town Manager's goals and objectives, and something tells me that that, that may just appear on one of the, one of the documents that, that we circulate. So thank you, I appreciate the comment. Anything else from members of the council? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martelli. Item H, and I hate to do this to you twice in one night, Ms. Kramer, but I'm going to steal item H away from you, the approval of the 2025-2029 agreement between the Cheshire BOE and the Education Association of Cheshire. I was hoping that either Dr. Solan or CEO Masiano would be here tonight, so I'm going to ask for a motion to table this, either to later this evening, if they were to show up, or to our second January meeting, should that be more convenient.
I think from a timeline, potentially this Thursday, because we only have so many days to act on it.
Yeah, okay.
Not the second meeting in January, the second meeting this week.
Okay.
Thursday night.
Oh, the second meeting this week, I apologize.
Potentially, that's what I was referencing.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball, that's right, because we have a 30, a 30-day window, yes. Thank you very much for clarifying.
I'm still trying to see.
So if not tonight, then, then Thursday's meeting, we would add it to the agenda there.
Do you want to wait to, do that just?
We could do, yeah, instead of tabling, we'll, we'll skip it for now, and, and if, if we go to executive session and, and come out, and there's nothing, then we will adjourn and move it to Thursday. Thank you. I appreciate the, the assistance and the cooperation with that. I know that there's three gentlemen in the back of the room that were equally as anxious to, to speak tonight as Mr. Martelli was earlier, and we will start with item number I, the approval of a new special revenue auction proceed fund for the Water Pollution Control Division, and I will throw it to Mr. Jinks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be it resolved, the Town Council approves resolution number 011425-9. Be it resolved, the Town Council hereby establishes a new special revenue auction proceed fund for the Water Pollution Control Division for the purpose of utilizing funds realized from auctioning old WPCD vehicles and equipment for new WPCD vehicles and equipment.
We have a motion, we have a second from Mr. Walsh, and we will turn the discussion over to Mr. Kement. Thank you very much, appreciate your indulgence with us this evening. Did you want to, oh, okay.
Is it?
Yeah, there it is.
And I thought.
Mike just had to, Mike just had to.
It hit it, yeah.
Give you some volume.
And I thought Channel 3 was here for me. Fair enough.
We can call him back if you want.
All right, I'll wait. Pretty much, it's self-explanatory. Currently, the WPCD funds the equipment and vehicles, and when it goes to auction, those proceeds do not go back into the WPCD account. It gets lost somewhere over another general account or another fund, when we feel that it should go back into the WPCD account. So that's why we're asked to set up a special account, like there are for the Police Department, Public Works, and the Fire Department.
Excellent. Questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Move to item J, which is the approval of amended maintenance and inspection fees in the FOG Ordinance Section 16-6D1, affectionately known as the FOG Ordinance. And Mr. Jinks, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be resolved, the Town Council approves resolution number 011425-10. Be resolved, the Town Council hereby amends the annual fee in the FOG Ordinance Section 16-6D1 to the following. Fines and fees, any fees associated with the town's FOG management program shall be due and payable within 30 days of the date of issue, and the town is authorized but not required to approve an extension of time of the due date up to seven days after the end of the billing period. 1% interest will be applied monthly to the unpaid balance, including previously applied interest of all bills outstanding beyond 30 days from issuance. Annual fee and annual maintenance and inspection fee of $75 will be billed and payable for each FOG Class III or Class IV, or FDA Class II, III, and IV, FSEs. This will also include the review and approval of the facility registration form and all required inspections. Inspection violation fees, the town will perform inspections of the FSE to determine compliance with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. General permit for the discharge of wastewater associated with food service establishments. Each day that a violation continues shall be a separate occurrence of the violation. This ordinance amendment will be effective 21 days after publication.
I'm sorry, I missed the, Mr. Walsh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jinks, thank you, Mr. Walsh, and Mr. Kement, back to you for FOG.
I'd like to start off to say that, keep in mind, this is new territory for this ordinance, of the FOG regulation. So we did our best ability to scope out other communities and see what they're charging for rates, and then putting up an ordinance together. With that said, we did use most of the language from the MDC for setting up the ordinance, and we were on the fence of how to apply the application fee at that time, because it was very unclear of who was actually going to administer the inspection work. Was it going to be our department, or the WPCD, or was it going to be through Chespricot? And at the time, we were talking to Maura, and she made it very clear that, that they were not going to be taking care of the inspection. So we formulated a, a application fee based on how long it would take to do the inspection in-house. There's quarterly inspections, that would mean each establishment would have to have four inspections with reporting, and like I said, we did our best judgment to come up with an application fee. Since that time, there was a new director of health who actually put in writing that the Health District will be taking charge of the inspection fees for the FOG ordinance. With that said, the $300 didn't seem reasonable anymore, that's why I'm presenting the lower fees at $75. I also scoped out other municipalities to see what they were charging, and currently, they're averaging about $100 for an application fee. South Windsor, I believe, Simsbury, and Cromwell are doing $100, so we felt the $75 didn't make sense, and it fell within that range. So that's why we're before you to, the only change we're making is to drop the application range. And this was actually brought up by Counselor Walsh, who didn't make that mention last time when we did originally get this approved, that he did feel that the fees were high, and it actually didn't sit well with us either, but we just, we, this is new, we're just lost a little bit, so trying to make it work.
Appreciate it, thank you. Mr. Walsh, do you?
Sure.
I knew, I knew you were going to want a comment, so I want to go to you first.
As the lone dissenter of that vote, I did feel it was too high. How's that? Okay. I did feel the fee was a little.
Try it again. Hello? Is anyone's mic on?
Mine is. Hello? Hello? Yeah, mine's on.
Should be good.
Okay. As the lone dissenter of that vote that day, I did feel it was too high. I had done a lot of research myself, because I, I felt that we're already, our restaurants and businesses are being charged a high amount by our Health District for their inspections, and now we're going to charge them in addition, $300 at that time, to do another inspection, that I felt the Health Department should be able to just check the grease trap, and if there was, looked like there was a problem, notify you guys, and then you guys can go out and do a full inspection on it. I just felt that that was an important thing to do, and, and I'm glad that you guys listened and, and looked into it yourselves, and I'm glad that, you know, Chespricot, you know, even though he's gone now, did, did, did agree to do that, because from what I understand, on their inspection form, that is listed on their inspection form to inspect the grease trap. So I feel, you know, I looked at all the towns that you mentioned, plus a few others, to see how they were doing it, and, and $300 was by far the highest amount of anyone in this state. But Mr. Milano is well worth the $300 to go and inspect it, believe me, and I'm hoping that somebody else would, would be doing it instead of him, because he's too valuable to, to go out and do these things, but hopefully there will be some training of other people who can do that. But thank you for, for doing that, and, and I'm sure our businesses and restaurants will appreciate it as well.
I, I do want to add one more thing, is that when we were in discussions, or when Dave was in discussions with the Health Department, I did ask for that to be in writing, because I don't know, or we all don't know what's going to happen in the future with, you know, another director coming in and taking over, they might change their minds. So I just wanted to make sure it was very clear and in writing of our expectations, so.
And we'd also have the right to revisit it, should there be a change, so.
Right, and if we could even use that.
But, but I appreciate you guys, you know, looking into it further and, and working with the Health District, and I thank Mr. Walsh again for bringing it up, and I couldn't agree more, that the last thing we want to do is add fees to our, our local businesses. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jinks?
Yeah, I just want to quickly give credit where credit is due, because I know, Dave, you had, even before Chuck had started, you and Jeff had spoken about this, because you were working through the ordinance then, so, you know, good on you to kind of take that initiative and for that to come, come to fruition. You know, FOG is, it, it's, I know there's been some debate about whose responsibility is. I searched pretty much every Health District website to find mention of FOG, and mention of a fee structure, and was unable to find one. You know, Chuck had confirmed to me that it's just, it's simply not something that Health Districts. Health Districts are responsible for. The, you know, deep issues, you guys, the permit, and you guys have the responsibility to do sewers. It's also in our, in our local regs. So just wanted to kind of put that out there. I'm glad that we've come to an agreement, and it works for everybody. And it makes a lot of sense. You know, it's, and I think Jeff had said, you know, to you from the beginning, that they're in the kitchen, if they see those issues with the grease traps or whatever they see, grease equipment, it makes sense for them to kind of note that and let you guys know. So I'm glad that we've, we've come to that point here finally.
Thank you, Mr. Jinks. Any other comments from members of the council? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Brings us to item K, the review and approval of contract with Wright Pierce for an I&amp;I study through Connecticut Deep's Clean Water Fund Program. Ms. Pearson.
Be it resolved, the Town Council approves Resolution Number 011425-11. Resolution, be it resolved that the Town Council hereby awards the contract for an inflow and infiltration plant capacity and force main evaluation to Wright Pierce at a total cost not to exceed $528,251. And be it further resolved that the town manager is authorized to execute the contracts pursuant to these awards upon the approval by the town attorney as to form a legal sufficiency. And I turn this on over to.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And back to you, sir.
I just want to start off by saying that we are still currently under an NOB department. And as much as we've gotten our plan up to the standards, which we feel we should have that pulled already, my gut feeling is that they're not going to release that until the I&amp;I study has been established. That's why we've been proactive in trying to move forward with that process. In dealings with the, there is a fund called Clean Water Fund, which they will offer 55% relief for services of my study. Through that fund, it is a requirement to follow specific procedures to hire a qualified consultant to do the work for the study. I do have a handout if anyone's interested on the hiring process for that. But basically, it starts out with a QBS, which is a quality-based selection process. And we just went as out of bid. We only received two firms that responded to the response. Well, the two firms was Pioneer Bond and Ray Pierce. We vetted them. We had panels that reviewed their work. They had presentations made, and we judged them. They were neck and neck, they're both reputable firms, they both were able of doing the work. We did decide at the end to go with Wright Pierce because of the history that Wright Pierce has with the town. It just makes sense. The process does not go on the lowest price. It goes on the best qualified firm to do the work. So the first step is to get the firm. The second step is, once we get the firm, they're going to provide us a fee which is the goal key. Wright Pierce did present me a fee. I went through it. I vetted it. Everything looked fine. And then we submitted to Connecticut Deep. I believe it took them three or four months, if I'm not mistaken, to actually get to review it and process. And they were actually, they had some changes, and the fee actually went up from what was originally posted. So at the end of the day, we did receive the approval from Connecticut Deep to move forward. And we're here today to have the town give the town manager authorization to review this.
If I could just jump in on one other piece. I know we said I&amp;I, and I&amp;I is the big piece of this, but we're also doing a plant capacity analysis and the force main. Yep.
One is the I&amp;I study throughout the town to determine that.
Just for the record, I know. Thank you. I know we're all very familiar, a little too familiar with it, but yeah, for the public.
So water in the system that you don't want to have in the system. It's not wastewater.
The second part is, we're also doing a plant capacity evaluation in terms of what is our plant currently, what's the capacity for the plant. Because right now, it's kind of, we believe it's supposed to be rated at a four million gallon today, but we want to be very sure of what we're able to have working happening. And then thirdly, is that we're also doing an evaluation on the older force mains in town. As you know, we had a force main rupture that happened a while back that set us back financially, and we don't want to have any issues forward. So part of this scope is actually looking at some of that. So there's more than just an I&amp;I study for this.
Questions? Mr. Walsh.
You mentioned that you think we're at the 4 million gallon. What are we doing on an average now for the town?
Our flow recently has been about 2 and 1/2 million gallons, but we have raised all 7 million.
So with all the new construction and everything else, we should be able to, hopefully, our plant should be able to handle with what we currently have under construction. Who knows what the future brings, but that's what we're going to try to find out, right?
Yeah, we're, the capacity evaluation will see what the plant is actually rated for because it, you know, could be lower than the 4 million, and that's why we're surcharging so much. So you could find out something bad, but you also can find out something good. That's why we're getting it done, to see where we're at.
Well, let's hope it's good.
Yeah.
Mr. Jinks.
It's related to I&amp;I. I know at the most recent Water Pollution Control Authority meeting, I don't know, I'm not sure who mentioned it, but there was a mention of the, I thought you found something related to the prison property. I don't know if that's, if you've since been able to flush that out at all.
No pun intended.
Well, I said, I said flush, I said flush that out. I flushed it. Flesh. Nice try. So I don't know if you have any update on that. It sounded like a significant potential I&amp;I issue there, so.
Yeah, there definitely is a problem there, 100%. There is an I&amp;I issue there. Unfortunately, we just, there's no progress right now, but we did locate that issue. So that will be part of the study that's going to be taken care of under this process. I also want to mention that we do have a representative from Wright Pierce, Dennis Diver here. If there's any specific questions regarding the scope of work or actually the process through the Clean Water Fund, he's here to answer those questions as well.
Any other questions from members of the council? Mr. Mylone.
Thanks, Peter. Thank you, Merrick. Thanks for the explanation on the process, too, because it was helpful to understand who, how many firms went after this and how you went through the QBS, which I concur is. Yeah, that's great. Which I concur is the appropriate manner in which to get this done. And, you know, I looked everything over. It looks very reasonable. The scope looks very, very complete. But I'm curious about the I&amp;I because I can't tell from a geographic, from a geographic perspective, what areas are we limiting ourselves in areas of town that we're looking at? Are we taking this as a global review of the whole town and then focusing in on, because it looks like you've got linear, linear feet of pipe and numbers of locations and things like that. So I'm curious what the I&amp;I kind of plan is to get our arms around the problem.
Sure. Dennis Diver from Wright Pierce, 27 Farmington Drive, Northford, Connecticut. Yes, so the department requires a system-wide, they will only fund it if you do a system-wide approach first. So we're actually installing 32 flow meters throughout town, which will cover no more than 20,000 linear feet of pipe. So those will be installed for a period of 10 weeks or until we have, until at least two one-inch or two half-inch rainstorms occur. That data is then analyzed, and the system is broken up into those 32 areas and prioritized from 1 to 32. And then you can start drilling down through those. So it's, the first step is to isolate and prioritize every section of pipe in the town through, through these flow meters. Obviously, we would not be looking at, you know, Dickerman Road pump station area up there. It's just recently installed, so, you know, we do have that pump station. We can look at the runtimes there to see if there's any issues with the installation of the pipe, et cetera.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call Mr. Velliber, just under the wire.
Yeah, I know, I know. I just wanted to go. So according to this, the price, they estimated it 528,000, and that 55% of that would be reimbursed by the state?
Yes, so you'll enter into an agreement with the state, a Clean Water Fund agreement. I know that in the past, they used to reimburse as the project went along, but I believe recently, for some reason, they wait until you're done before they reimburse you. So you have to front the money, but you'll receive 55% back. That five, that price is, you know, it could be less in the end. It's, that's, if we, the meters, hopefully, the meters don't need to stay in for 10 weeks. That's the largest chunk of money for this is to installing those meters for 10 weeks. It's a big effort.
And just related to that question, and so to your point, I was going to make the same, which is that the town's share of that amounts to about $237,000. And we do have existing I&amp;I appropriations from the last capital budget to fund that that Merrick and I were just talking about last week.
Ms. Kramer.
The reimbursement on that is from where?
It's from the state of Connecticut, the Clean Water Fund Program.
State, not federal?
State.
So that money is guaranteed even through the next, the next year or whenever this project is completed?
So their approval letter says it's not guaranteed, but I've never done a project where the town, the municipality did not receive the money. You will enter, as soon as you execute an agreement with Wright Pierce, then you can execute an agreement with the state, and then you're locked in for your money.
The reimbursement?
The reimbursement, correct.
And that hasn't been done yet?
Has not been done yet, no. That's the, that'll be the first step after our agreement is executed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no more discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three more quick items, and then we are going to jump back to a moved item. And I promise you, these will be quick, otherwise I'd, I'd put you up right now. So item number, or item letter L, is call for a public hearing to consider an amendment to the previously approved appropriation and borrowing authorization of $225,000 for replacement of the boiler and roof repair at the Cheshire Community Pool to increase the appropriation and borrowing authorization to $100,000 for an aggregate of $325,000. Mr. Wolf.
Be it resolved that the Town Council approves Resolution Number 011425-12. Resolution, be it resolved that the Town Council shall hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, February 10th, 2025, to consider the following resolution. Resolution amending the previously approved appropriation and borrowing authorization of $225,000 for replacement of the boiler and roof repair at the Cheshire Community Pool to increase the appropriation and borrowing authorization by $100,000 for an aggregate of $325,000. Be it resolved that the town manager shall cause a notice of said public hearing to be posted and published according to law. And be it further resolved that the date, time, and place of the postponements thereof shall be determined by the town manager with the approval of the Chair of the Council.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Do we have a second? Mr. Velliber, thank you. And I will throw it to Mr. Kimball for discussion.
I'll be very, very quick. As the general submission form indicates, the Public Building Commission, we received eight bids. This is a project overseen by the Public Building Commission. The lowest qualified bidder was still about $87,000 more than we had appropriated, once you include the amount you'd want to have for contingency. And so that roughly $100,000 is what we need to get the very much needed boiler project finalized and complete. And so we are asking for this additional appropriation because it's now over $250,000. It does necessitate a public hearing, hence the call for the hearing, which is really all we're doing tonight. So we'll discuss this more in February. But the anticipate, which we can talk about then, but the plan would be to take that $100,000 that we previously had for pool decking improvements, if the council so chooses, deauthorizing that as we reevaluate the plan going forward for the pool decking, which is less of a priority than the boiler, and use that $100,000 to get this boiler project underway and complete, as that is really the top priority right now for the pool. So appreciate your support and call for the hearing.
Questions or comments? Again, this is just for a public hearing, so I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Brings us to item M, the amendment to, amendment reinstatement to the Volunteer Firefighter Pension Plan. It's my understanding that this item had some last-minute attorney changes made to it, and the firefighter representative has been unable to just confirm and verify those. So Ms. Kramer, I will ask you for motion to table. Done.
Motion to table.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer, and thank you, Mr. Walsh. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Thank you all. And item M, N, as in Nancy, is the approval of stipulated tax agreements. And this will be discussed during an executive session, and we will do a resolution and discussion and vote following our executive session this evening. Which brings us back to item H, the approval of the 2025 through 2029 agreement between the Cheshire Board of Education and the Education Association of Cheshire. Ms. Kramer, finally, you get to do one.
Does that go? Yeah?
Yes, honest.
Be it resolved that the Town Council approves Resolution Number 011425-8. Be it resolved that the Town Council approves/rejects the agreement between the Cheshire Board of Education and the Education Association of Cheshire for the term July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2029, as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Walsh, thank you. And I know that Dr. Solan and Mr. Masiana are in attendance. Gentlemen, thank you for your meeting, hopping tonight. We truly appreciate you coming here.
Good evening. Thank you.
Would you like me to give a quick summary or anything like that? Maybe before I begin and before I forget. I understand that earlier this evening, there was conversation about school construction. If you go on our website, there's a, right on the homepage, there's a link that says school modernization. In there, you can click to see videos of drone footage over the last several months. We haven't loaded the photo link yet, but the photos, some of the photos have been taken historically. We're just clearing up a link issue there, so those should be up shortly. But the drone video is already up there. We are exploring permanent cameras. We met with a vendor, and hopefully, should have that set up, at least the agreement in the next couple of weeks, and then have the actual cameras up there shortly thereafter. And I understand the question about wanting to be able to see in places into the construction for ongoing progress if you're on site, and we're working on that, too. We just had a fencing update at Norton today, as a matter of fact. So we're aware of those issues. As it relates to the contract, you know, thank you for taking the time to review this and inviting us to share our perspective. If you're not really familiar with this process, teacher contracts in Connecticut are subject to binding arbitration. That means we have a schedule that we must negotiate this contract by. If that's not successful, it goes to mediation. If that is, gets to a place where sides can't resolve the matter, it goes to binding arbitration. In binding arbitration, there is an arbitrator who represents the interest of labor, one who represents the town, and a third mediator who is allegedly neutral. And so, thank you, Jeff. And so, basically, at that phase, the contract settlements are reviewed. You put your best offer forward from each party. The three arbitrators select one of the two, based on. The three arbitrators select one of the two, based on settlements from other communities. So there, it's not just the salary, but also other elements of the contract that are arbitrated that way, such as insurance costs. So in effect, there is very little tolerance outside of what average settlements are. It's just the way the system is established. Unless you can prove that the town is wildly affluent beyond their means and can pay more or vice versa, the tolerance from the average is really pretty limited. With that in mind, we engaged in negotiations over the course of the summer. Over the many sessions, were unable to come to a settlement. We went to mediation on the evening of, the afternoon really of September twenty-fourth and well into the evening before we were able to come to an agreement in the late evening of the twenty-fourth. The Education Association of Cheshire subsequently voted on those mediated terms and adopted the new contract, which was therefore reviewed by the Board of Education and approved by the Board of Education on November seventh. As I mentioned, you know, there's limited tolerance for deviation from the settlements. And the, the New Haven County average for a four-year settlement was seventeen point seven-two percent. The Cheshire Board of Education settlement was seventeen point seven-six percent. So almost exactly on the New Haven County average. The, it's a four-year contract, as we mentioned. The memo that I shared with town manager Kimball, and I know he has forwarded on to you, describes in much better detail some of the elements of the, the contract. In essence, a general wage increase, which means everybody's wages go up two point nine percent per year over the course of this contract. The, that means if you're at top step, fourteen or more years in public education, your wage increases two point nine percent per year. That is the majority of our teaching staff. The other piece that contributes to this is step increases for people who are not at top step. So those increases, the way that we calculate them is actually conservative. We assume that every single person moves up and that, you know, over the course of that, that contract, and that there are no retirements. And so that's how we calculate the cost. Clearly, there will be retirements over the next four years. Those people will, in hope, be replaced by talented people lower on the pay scale, though for, therefore dropping the overall cost. But we calculate it in the most conservative fashion. And so you see the annual total salary increase. Those are elevated over our, over what we know will be reality, but those are the most conservative figures. Some, a lot, I mean, there's a lot of detail here, which I don't want to bore you with going through every single element. I will say with respect to benefits, which is a substantial cost in our budget on an annual basis, as I'm sure it is for you, the HSA coshare increases from the current eighteen percent rate to eighteen point seven-five, then nineteen and a half, twenty and a quarter, twenty point seven-five over the years of the contract. Again, those are within the realm of what's going on. Those are, those are probably more competitive. Ours are, are probably a little bit better than most of the average, whereas the overall salary is kind of right in the middle of, of our peer groups. The HSA is the core plan, but will, we do offer PPO and HMO currently with a buy-up option. So if you want to elect those plans, you can buy up, but those are being phased out over the course of this contract. The deductibles remain twenty-two five fifty for single, forty-five hundred for family coverage, and the Board of Ed contribution toward that remains flat. Dental coverage for dependent children extends to age twenty-one, where it was previously nineteen. And then there are some other language adjustments that we use to, you know, make our, to strengthen our contract or make our contract a little bit more attractive to people who are not fresh out of college. The reality is that the, it is becoming exceedingly more difficult to recruit people out of college because we don't have as many students pursuing education degrees in college. And therefore, we're much more conscious of recruiting people who are currently teachers in other places. So we've added a benefit in the contract where we can offer teachers who don't live in Cheshire, a tuition option if you work here at fifty percent of the regular education tuition cost, if you teach in Cheshire. So hopefully that will continue to make us more attractive as it becomes more difficult to recruit teachers. So if, and that's also if there are, we don't provide transportation or anything like that, and if there are, if they engage in like a specialized program that is above and beyond the cost of standard, they're responsible for that cost. So it's not, you know, all, all fees are covered, but fifty percent of tuition plus they can, they have to pay extenuating fees. That's, you know, an overview of the contract. Obviously, you have the, the contract and the more detailed overview, and certainly we're happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Solan. Questions on the contract? Mr. Jinks.
Thank you for that overview. Just my, my question is more of a curiosity about the, the pay for all the different coaching positions and special.
Stipends, yeah.
Are those, do those also get negotiated or are they just kind of a, do they get increased at all each year or how does that work?
Sure, so they're negotiated and they, you know, periodically is, actually every time we review the contract, some things come and go in those stipended positions. Based on student need, interest, as things evolve, we add or delete, you know, those, those positions. They are also subject to the same two point nine percent general wage increase that exists for teacher salaries.
Okay.
Each year.
And the, the levels of those are, those are sort of market-based, like if, you know, whatever the, kind of generally what coach, what golf coaches make is what they make in the state, more or less.
Yeah, so because, you know, there are different expectations and the number of students who participate and stuff, what we'll do is consult with the athletic director for that sort of general, if we're talking about coaching, or consult with administration, building-based administration, if we're talking about other clubs and activities, to see how many students are participating, what, what are the hours, what's the season. So when we, you know, look at those special positions, we have a better picture of that. So yes, it's generally on the average with fluctuation. So for example, best buddies, the Cheshire Public Schools Best Buddies Program far exceeds what most people are doing. So it's likely that that stipend is a little bit higher, not dramatically, but a little bit higher than what you might find in peer districts. But there are other places where those stipends may not be as high as something that's, something that's really engaged in a different district.
Right.
But it's generally within that average.
Okay. The other question I have is just a bit more general as, as far as recruitment goes.
Yeah.
Is there an effort, is there ever an effort to recruit people who are sort of, they're retired, their, their primary career is over, and maybe they, there's an opportunity for them to.
Sure.
Teach. Is there a way for people in our community to become a teacher in the Cheshire Public School System?
Sure. There are.
Quickly, or, or that's a way that's advantageous for everybody?
They call that alternative route to certification. In order to be an educator in a public school system in Connecticut, you have to hold certification. And there are, over the last couple of years, alternative pathways that have evolved to be able to provide that opportunity. If, certainly if anybody's interested, they could contact our office and we can, you know, put them in touch with the right people at the state who could support that process. We don't, as a, as an organization, have, this, I wouldn't say we have their time and resources to advertise and recruit that population as much as we focus on kids coming out of school that have been trained or other people that have already had that training and certification, because that process is pretty time-consuming as well, that you have to acquire that certification over the course of, depending on your basic level of education, at least a year. So.
Mr. Jinks, just a quick comment on your question. The, the golf coaches usually like to be under par.
They'll be here all night, folks.
Mr. Mylone, and then I saw another hand as well.
Thanks, thanks, Jeff. Your email was really comprehensive and helpful.
Good.
Because there's a lot of information here. And I don't have any basis for providing any, you know, either negative or positive comments on this because it all seems fair and equitable. Just a couple of minor questions. Did, did the board vote unanimously to approve this or was it, was it?
Do you recall that? Unfortunately, I was out of town on November seventh. I thought that they did.
I believe they did.
It was my son's visiting weekend in college. We'll, we'll double check that.
Double check.
And get it to.
Pretty sure of that.
But I'm pretty sure that they did.
Okay. And, and I'm just curious about the longevity payments that, they're not significant, but is that a big deal for, for keeping teachers in the system here, those, those longevity payments, which you increased a little bit, it looks like?
The, you know, it's interesting, when contracts are lower, this, I'll be quite honest with you, this is, this current climate that we're in across Connecticut has the highest four-year settlements I've, I've seen in my twenty-seven years in Connecticut. When settlements are one percent a year at some points I've seen, those longevity stipends are really pretty critical for those people at top step. When you're getting one percent and inflation is exceeding one percent, that's something that they hang on to. So really, for the people at the top step, they mean a lot. And that's, as I mentioned, a fair number of our employees are top step. We, we don't tend to lose people. Once they come to work for us, they, they tend to stay.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And then the, we're, we're very close to the average in, in New Haven County. Just out of curiosity, you know how many other areas or districts or, or communities that, that were averaged to that, that negotiated this particular, it's not everyone every year, right?
No. It's a, it's a relatively small percentage, actually, that are negotiating, maybe twenty percent of the districts a year. And we're within our demographic group, very close. We don't really compare ourselves to Fairfield County or rural Connecticut. But up and down the ninety-one corridor, we're, the average is, I don't have that average in front of me, John. Unfortunately, we were doing a budget meeting and the bat signal went out, and so we came over, but I know.
This, the.
And it was a six-oh unanimous.
Okay. But this, you, it said that the, the average settlement in New Haven has been seventeen points for four-year contracts. When you say that, does that, how many communities? Is that like two other communities or is that like fifteen other communities?
Not fifteen. I, I would call it probably a half dozen.
Half a dozen?
Yeah.
Similar communities?
Yes. Well, it was New Haven County communities.
Okay.
So it could be anything from East Haven to Woodbridge.
And then the last question I have, which isn't for you, I think it's for Sean, maybe it's you, Peter, is, I know we're voting on this. As, as council, what does our vote mean exactly? Because.
I can help explain that too.
You can help explain that, okay.
Yeah. So statutorily, the, once the, the contract is posted, there's thirty days for the town council to either adopt the contract, reject the contract, or take no action. If the council takes no action, the automat, the contract automatically gets adopted. If you accept it, the contract's adopted for the next fiscal year. If you reject the contract, we go back to arbitration at that point.
Thank you.
Mr. Walsh?
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for, I know it's a late night for you guys, too. The, you're removing one step from there. How difficult are you, is it for you to attract new teachers? Because I, I've often said that, you know, the, the buildings don't make what's great about our schools. It's the people inside there that makes it great. We're gonna be making the outside look great, too, in the next year and a half, but I, I always say that, you know, we, we seem to get some of the top teachers around and, and I appreciate the hard work you guys put into that. But, you know, I, I mean, we're, we're removing one step. By step, it's years, is that how?
Years service.
Service, yeah.
Right. So in essence, somebody who is now coming out of college, and it, it's become more, it, it's not as frequent that somebody would come out of college and be certified with a four-year degree. Most programs have a master's degree because a master's degree is a requirement for a teacher in Connecticut within five years of employment. So most programs now roll that in to a fifth year at the university level. And so what we aggressively recruit out of university to try and hire people first year, but frankly, the only place where we have success with that is elementary classroom teachers and occasionally special education teachers, because there just aren't enough physics teachers coming out of first year university. So, you know, it's, it's, makes us more attractive to hire somebody lower step because if that first step isn't attractive to the kid coming out of college and they can make five thousand dollars more down the street, that's a big deal for a kid who's twenty-three years old and this is their first job and probably has loans. So the difference between, you know, fifty-eight and fifty-three is a big deal. And so that's why we want to do it, to be able to hire somebody at fifty-eight who's really talented, than have to hire somebody who's been teaching for six years down the road, and now we're hiring him at sixty-nine or something.
They start at step two or not?
Yeah. Which is now the new step one.
Ms. Pearson?
I just had a question about this new section, eighteen point nine. So is the fifty percent, that's just the per pupil expenditure? Is that what that would amount?
No, we set a tuition rate.
Yeah.
On an annual basis. So it's not our per pupil expenditure. I, I regret that I don't, do you remember the tuition this year off the top of your head? I, I don't know.
Yeah, that's okay.
Eighteen.
It's in the vicinity.
Yeah.
It's in the vicinity of our per pupil expenditure. So, I mean, in that case, it would be roughly a nine thousand dollar tuition that we would have the teacher pay for their, each child who attends.
And has that been found in other communities to attract people from outside that, that's found to be?
At one point, Madison publicized tuition students for people that aren't even in the district because they were just trying to maintain their own, their own enrollment. For us, I get asked that question regularly from teachers who work here. I know that I will be able to publicize that as a way to attract people as it becomes more and more difficult to hire positions. You know, when I think about math and science positions, language positions, those are really getting difficult to hire. We are definitely hiring people from other places, and if I can get a better candidate because of this, I think it'll be advantageous for all of our kids.
Any other questions? Just, just Velliver.
You're always under the wire.
I know. The, it's fun, so just a quick question. So it's, as we look at these numbers, it sounds like, you know, for me, one of the big concerns always is, you, if we, if we were to reject it, obviously it goes back to arbitration. The question is, you, it sounds like we're sort of already hovering right at the.
we're sort of already hovering right at the, you know, for most categories, almost right where the average is for the general idea. So it seems to me that, you know, we could potentially reject it. But it sounds like, you know, these numbers may not be what everybody might want. But it sounds like they're not the worst they can be either. And so that's my, so it sounds like it's a reasonable, like, increase number at basically 2.9%. But the concern, obviously, was you probably, like, as we've, we tried to do here, work on some of the ancillary costs as well, insurance and medical costs and like that. And it sounds like that may not have worked out as well as you, but in the end, we're still in the same, you're still in a ballpark of where your arbitration awards have been coming down in the general area, correct?
I think, you know, the mediator who also is an arbitrator came walking out with, this is a good deal. This is a fair deal for both sides. I think both sides walked away thinking, you know, there were some things we would have liked to seen, maybe a little bit different. Nobody walked away thinking substantially different. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, it is a good settlement because it is, you know, like spot on the averages. And to roll the dice to see if we could save a little bit of money will come at significant expense if we were to go to arbitration, not only from a financial perspective, but I think from a morale perspective. At a period when, you know, I think, you know, unless we were getting a bad deal, which we wouldn't have agreed to anyway, and we would already be in arbitration, I'm sensitive to the morale side of things, too, to be honest with you. So I think, all things considered, this is a contract worth adopting.
And then last is just, is, do you think, and you mentioned that this is, these are some numbers that you think are pretty high, or that you've been seeing high numbers over-
Across the state.
Across the state. Do you think that that's because this is sort of the first round, sort of post-COVID negotiations for some places? You know, where those numbers may have been kept lower over time, and now they're coming back and saying, okay, we lost three, four years at a lower rate, and now towns are probably, you know, looking to get paid.
Yeah, I think that's a fair question, that there may be some, you know, I guess, market correction after post-COVID world. But I also recognize the cost of general inflation has been significant. The communities that are negotiating at this, at this round have seen, over the last couple of years of inflation, pretty favorable contracts, really, compared to the market, right? So I think, well, some people say, well, you know, man, this is a huge contract that we're getting now. They lose sight of the fact that the last couple of years, and I don't know that, in what world, 2.9% raise is a huge contract. Only in public sector teaching is that a huge contract. But that's, you know, I think it's, it's fair. It's, it plays out over the next four years, gives us consistency, gives us, you know, a number that we're now budgeting on, makes life a little straightforward. And I think the other thing is mentioned, you know, by Ms. Pearson, too, the opportunity to recruit off of that contract is something that, you know, I think is really, I don't want to lose sight of that, because retaining, hiring and retaining great teachers is an ever-increasing challenge for districts all over the state.
Well, thank you very much for what, you know, what you've done so far, and thank you for explaining that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, gentlemen, thank you. I appreciate your double duty tonight.
Yeah, our pleasure. Thanks for having us over here.
Bouncing from meeting to meeting. So I appreciate that we could get this done tonight.
Yeah, me, too.
With that, colleagues, I will try your minds. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Good night.
Which brings us to item nine, the Town Manager Report and Communications. Mr. Kimball?
All right. Can you hear me? There you go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try to be brief, given the hour. But I have circulated before you the Town Manager's Report for January. Up first is just a reminder, as we enter the winter months, we ask residents for cooperation in keeping our roads safe. And we'll go through all of the list there. But just remember, parking bans under street obstructions, clearing sidewalks within 24 hours of a snowfall, priority roads, mailboxes, the salt and sand mixture available at 1304 Waterbury Road. Also trying to do your part to keep fire hydrants and storm sewers clear. So just a reminder, I know we haven't had a lot of snow, but it comes and goes, and it's important that we all do our part to help out our public works, folks. Turning the page, Bartlett Park South update. Not any major updates this month, with the exception of a slight design change we received last week, or about two weeks ago, from Westin Sampson with respect to the doors, the openings, the four openings in the back of the bandshelf. So actually, not part of the bandshelf structure, canopy itself, but the wall on the back that helps, sort of, as a backdrop to the stage, but also directing the sound north and away from the folks there at Stone Gate. The change that was required is, the original design called for these accordion-style doors, but it was determined the cross pitch of the stage would not support that functionality very well. And as I said here in the report, the recommended switch is to a hardy board-style barn door. You see an example of which, the kind of classic sliding barn door style there of two 4-foot by 10-foot panels. This, as I indicate here in the report, we reviewed this by staff. I also circulated this with the three council liaisons who originally worked on the design of this project, for their thoughts, and everyone agreed this seemed to provide easier maintenance, more durable against damage and vandalism. There's some concerns about the working of those accordion doors over time, and whether they may start to be compromised, the complicated hinges and whatnot. Provide a very similar, and for some, actually a preferable aesthetic, and also should be significantly cheaper than that door system was. So for all those reasons, we've authorized them to go ahead with that slight design change. So just an update there for the council's education. Also, with respect to projects, the new operations center in the basement of Town Hall, we've been making a lot of steady progress over the last few weeks. And the bids were all received, and a contract is ready to be awarded this week, anticipating execution later this week and construction starting soon thereafter. The space down below, for anyone who's seen it, and if you haven't, please contact me. Feel free to come get a tour before it gets worked on. It used to be a large room full of all of finance department assessor and tax files. They've all been relocated to other spots, and it's all clear, and a little easier to envision the EOC in there now. But we're excited to get that project going. Just an update on a very interesting program at the Cheshire Public Library. On Thursday, January 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00, in the Mary Baldwin Room, Cheshire Library will be hosting a discussion on racial profiling with Connecticut Racial Profiling Prohibition Project. This program studies how well law enforcement is following state laws in prohibiting race-based discrimination during traffic stops. Our own police chief, Neil Dreyf, has a long history of participating statewide on this type of initiative, along with project manager Ken Barone and others, who will discuss how this project's been working to improve relationships between the public and the police. So come join the conversation and offer your input. Light refreshments will be served. Again, starts at 6:00 PM on January 30th. And registration is required, so please sign up. Moving on, I know we talked about it earlier, and as approved by the council earlier this evening, just a reminder for everyone that the elderly and 100% disabled tax relief program runs from February 1st to May 15th. More information, please visit our website for a lot of great information, or just contact our assessor's office, and they'd be happy to help you determine eligibility. Also, very exciting results from last Thursday's opening of the Energy Performance Contracting 2.0 project. We've been working closely with the consultants at Energia as the project leaders. They held the RFP opening on Thursday. The good news is twofold. I copied a lot of this from an update from Vin Massiana. The most important being that between the town and school buildings, we look to have significant enough savings from energy improvements to pay for building infrastructure improvement projects ranging from $6.6 million total from one firm's proposal to $20 million proposal. Just as a way of context, our last energy performance contract, a little less than 10 years ago, was $10.2 million. So a lot more to come. Again, this just came in on Thursday. But also, we had three firms that submitted, and they're all well-known and highly qualified, namely Honeywell, Johnson Controls, and Amoresco. There's a lot of detail being sorted through by the project team, again, led by Vin. And we'll be working through that as we continue this process in advance of the budget deliberations in a couple of months. Just a reminder, the 2026 Plan of Conservation and Development process is ongoing. Public Input Survey is open. There's a Survey Monkey link, both in this document, and will be on our, is on our website, and has been circulated on our social media, to encourage the public to give their feedback through the link. There's a lot of great questions and a very engaged survey there for, if you have a moment to circulate that amongst friends and family and constituents, that would be wonderful. And lastly, the West Main Street Business District Revitalization Plan, or the Bar Area Plan, Planning Grant Funded Project. The project team delivered the first draft of the proposed Form Based Code at a workshop last week on January 8th. They just delivered it to Planning and Zoning at this point. But they're reviewing it over the coming months, and they're scheduling public workshops on that draft report, further input and discussion. And I've also asked that we have that same copy that was delivered to PZC last week to be also just forwarded to the town council. So we'll take care of that as well. Other than that, just a reminder, we have another meeting later this week following the hearing. We have a hearing on Thursday, January 16th, at 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers, and then also a planned special meeting, second meeting in January, for some additional items that we have on January 28th. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Questions for the Town Manager? Ms. Pearson?
I just, I was just looking at the link for the Plan of Conservation and Development. So, I mean, that wasn't on the POC webpage? I guess I'm a little confused. Is that going to be included on the POCD webpage?
It's not on there now. I'd have to confirm.
I see it on the Cheshire, Connecticut webpage. I just Googled that, and I see that it's on the main page there. But I know prior, I was going to that POCD webpage, and I know when I've been talking with other commissions, there's a, the community feedback section just has like two maps where you can drop a couple of pins, but there wasn't-
All right. I'll go back to Mike and confirm that. I know we had forwarded, we had something from Tai Chi that we posted on social media earlier today. We were asked to post, so maybe they're in the process of doing it now, but I'll confirm with Mike Liddon as to why that's not on the, it can be cross-posted onto the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sure that's easy. Just make sure that we get it in all places.
Right. We've been directing people there. Yeah, absolutely.
Because I know that I'd signed up. I don't know that I've received anything that I'd seen, but I'd signed up on that POCD webpage for updates, and I haven't seen anything.
And you hadn't gotten that yet? Okay. I know we got it today, so it's possible that it's going out tomorrow.
It hasn't, yeah.
But I will confirm with Mike, and I appreciate you sharing that.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Because I want to make sure it's in as many spots as possible. So that's great feedback.
Thank you.
Mr. Walsh?
Thank you. Dr. Solan had mentioned about the cameras on the schools' websites. Can we get that, those same links on our regular website, too, so that the town residents who don't go to the school websites could see it? So.
Yep, absolutely. Yep.
Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to item number 11. Just noting on our item number 10, I do not want to skip Mr. Donofrio. But before I get there, just a reminder that the department's status reports for police firing EDC are in your packets, colleagues. And now, Attorney Donofrio, do you have a report?
I'll talk to you about the tax appeal on executive session.
Thank you, sir. Item number 11 is reports of committees of the council, starting with A, chairman's reports. To my left, Ms. Kramer.
We are currently reviewing the Town Manager's performance evaluation and contract. That's it.
Mr. Wolf? Mr. Jinks?
Budget season's two months away.
What a killjoy. Ms. Pearson?
Nothing to report.
Moving on to item I, Appointment of Town Council Members to the Administrative Review Group, Re-RFP 2425-17 Multimodal Transportation Plan. The intent is to place on the committee from the Town Council, Mr. Wolf, Mr. Jinks, and Mr. Vellaber. Item II is the referral of Labor Attorney RFP to the Planning Committee. Moving to B, Liaison Reports, again, starting to my left with Ms. Kramer.
Nothing to report. Actually, Karen Schnitzer just put out the most amazing, hi, the most amazing report. Is it available on the-
I sent it to the entire town council.
Is it available on the town website?
It certainly could be, if you'd like it to be posted. Copy of it.
Do you, Noel, do you have a copy of that? I'll make sure that you get a copy.
I have a copy of it.
And I, I think it was really well-written, very comprehensive. It shows how dedicated the commissions in town are, and I think everybody will benefit from reading it and possibly learn where and when they can become advocates for open spaces and environmental causes in Cheshire. Thank you, Karen.
I almost said nothing to report. I have to wait up for a second, sorry.
And continuing to my left, Mr. Wolf, please.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jinks?
No report.
Ms. Pearson?
And no report.
Mr. Walsh?
Well, I just want to thank Karen as well, because I think a couple of years ago, we did ask our, all our committees to present yearly reports. And so far, you're the only one who did it. And I appreciate the time and effort you put into that. So thank you for that. The Beautification Committee, although I, due to business, I was away from the last meeting last week. However, they are starting to get sign approvals for the North End, so it's getting exciting. I think Barnes &amp; Noble submitted their sign. So it kind of looks exciting to see, there's going to be a Barnes &amp; Noble right there. And so people still do read books, so thank you.
Yes, they do.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Vellaber. Mr. Mylone, thank you. As I multitask, let me get back. Nothing for C miscellaneous, miscellaneous. 12 appointments, we will have a boatload next month. 13 council communications, that's what I was busily trying to get to. And I do want to read into the record, if I can get there. A email that we received from Carol Dohini through the comments section of comments@cheshirect.org. The subject is blight. Hello, I don't know who this goes to, but hopefully I will get a response, and it will be read at the Town Council meeting Tuesday night. And here it is being read. So it will be put into the record. If need be, I will attend and read it into the record. However, anyhow, my name is Carol Dohini, and I am very frustrated with the enforcement of your blight ordinance. I have talked to just about everyone except one person on the council about this, and two blight officers and the head of planning and zoning. I guess there is a new blight officer, which no one in that department felt they needed to tell me, even though I'm still waiting for the last guy to get back to me. Last thing he said to me was, this has been going on for a couple years. Let me look into it. The town told our neighbors on Chipman Drive that they would take care of the blight removal, but I guess they've never done that before. So now has taken more than a year and a half to figure out who they're going to use to actually accomplish that fact. My husband has been saying all along he would be happy to do it. I do not know what the holdup is, and it's very frustrating. Please let me know if this will be read into the record, since we have no more town paper, or if I need to come to the meeting. Thank you, Carol and James Dohini. This was part of a lengthy discussion I had with Mr. Kimball tonight about a number of, early today, about a number of topics. And if you just want to, Sean, give a quick update as to where we are with this, I know there's some significant progress.
Sure, yes. And I did forward under the council, I replied to Carol earlier this morning on the email received. And we do have a new blight enforcement officer, we have a new assistant planer, Monica Sims. Carol's correct that we had our prior retirement of Mike Strollo, and then interim blight enforcement officer was Andrew Martelli for a handful of months. So I can recognize that she felt there were multiple people to go to over the course of the summer. But this has been- But this has been on the radar or for some time on Chipman Drive. There was enforcement action taken in January of '23, both following the process, the, the multiple letters and, and the action, and there was some cleanup done by the property owner, including removal of cars. And at the time, the blight enforcement officer felt that the progress was sufficient in recognizing the means and, and other factors involved, that, that at the time it had been cleaned up in sufficient order to not be warranted further enforcement at the time. Clearly that's changed over the, the past intervening year. And I did follow up, like I said, with Carol and I spoke with Monica this morning, who had already sent another letter back on December 23rd, starting the process or reinstituting the process. And the town is looking to exercise the piece of the ordinance that includes a clean and lean feature where we can, at the town's expense, clean up the property and then lean the property for that expense to be paid back when the property conveys ultimately. So that's a piece of the blight ordinance that, that we have actually used, contrary to what she said there on Heritage Drive, we did use a couple of years ago. And we just need to make sure we follow all the legal steps to do so first. And Carol did reply to me that this was very helpful. Thank you for the information, I very much appreciate it, so that's where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. And if I had been talented enough to scroll down in my email string, I would have seen that, that your reply was there as well. So thank you for, for the quick response and Carol knows now that this was also read into the record as well, so. There's nothing for 13B.
Something for miscellaneous.
Okay, wow. Always welcome miscellaneous items, Mr. Jinks.
Might be the first. I just wanted to, I don't know if anyone noticed, hopefully everyone did, in our department reports from the fire department, and this seems like a great time to recognize our fire department, but there are several letters there from, one from Wolcott, a couple from Suddington, having to do with their appreciation of our fire department recently for their support in, in, in fire operations. So I don't know that I've seen those letters before in those reports, but they're very impressive and I hope that everyone takes their time to, to read them because it certainly makes you feel good and it's, it's obviously very important that we have a, an effective firefighting force in town, so just wanted to add that.
And, wow, lots of miscellaneous. Let me, I just, I want to piggyback off of Mr. Jinks and say that Mr. Kimball and I did a week ago appear at the, at the firehouse, at the firefighters' meeting and present some certificates for about 21 firefighters who were involved in the Rockview Drive fire. So they were formally recognized at their, at their firehouse meeting. Ms. Kramer.
Mine's directly related to some occurrences earlier and I'd like to know that if next time the press is here, which I encourage, if we can please keep them from blocking our exit, that door is completely locked even to go get water, but more importantly for access to.
Excellent, yep.
Egress. Thank you.
Fire, yeah, fire egress.
Fire, the list is long, especially with them kind of.
Speaking of fire, so, yeah, it's been a fire scene.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you bringing that up. Which brings us to item 14, items for executive session. We have two real quick items. One is the item that we moved from new business. The second is land acquisition and I will accept a motion to go into executive session to include everyone at the dais and only everyone at the dais.
Noel.
Oh, and Noel, I'm sorry.
Jimmy.
No, and Jimmy, you staying?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, okay.
That's my joke.
All right, so the dais, Noel and Jim.
Second.
Thank you, everybody. Put this in.
The motion is, Mr. Walsh, or who is the?
I'll make the motion.
You do the motion, Mr. Walsh, and a second by Mr. Mylone. I see you looking at me.
All right.
And with that, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. We are now in executive session. Okay, so we are out and at this point, we will move item N, which is the approval of stipulated tax agreements. Mr. Wolf.
Be it resolved that the town council approves resolution number 011425-14A. Be it resolved that the town council approves the stipulated tax agreement between the town of Cheshire and Strathmore Holdings LLC for property located at 677 South Main Street, Unit 2, as presented. And be it further resolved that the town attorney is authorized and directed to execute on behalf of the town set agreement in the form and upon the terms and conditions as presented at this meeting.
Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Velver. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. Motion passes unanimously by those present. And back to you, Mr. Wolf.
Be it resolved that the town council approves resolution number 01142514B. Be it resolved that the town council approves the stipulated tax agreement between the town of Cheshire and James and Patricia McKenney for property located at 272 Beacon Hill Drive as presented. And be it further resolved that the town attorney is authorized and directed to execute on behalf of the town set agreement in the form and upon the terms and conditions as presented at this meeting.
We have a motion, Mr. Walsh with the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for, oh, okay. I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. I am opposed?
Abstaining.
Or abstaining? So the motion passes seven zero, oh, seven zero one, seven in favor, one abstention of those voting and present. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn, Mr. Velver, and second by Mr. Jinks, all those in favor. Good night, everybody.